...in regard to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm with him. Carla with a K-N-O-Y-E-S. Our household uses 65 and a half gallons of metered water per person per day. And while that's down from 150, it's up from 63 and a half a couple of months ago. Our PGE bill was $65 last month. We are generally in the Tier One usage category. I only say this to encourage everyone to become aware-
Test? Test? Excuse me.
Of, um, to become aware of their usage. Two topics tonight. One, movie recommendations, The Russian River, All Rivers, and then Tomorrowland, if you haven't seen that. Secondly, due to my snarky letter to the editor about the flood control project the Water Agency wanted to put on First Street West, Chief Engineer and Director of Groundwater Management Jay Jasper's invited me to attend the ground, the Sonoma Valley Groundwater Technical Advisory Committee and the Basin Advisory Panel. Since then, I've attended at least six educational events regarding climate change, watershed management, fish life cycles, and water conservation programs. I saw Lori Galian at the Climate Readiness Forum about two weeks ago. I'm sure you've heard the climate, excuse me, climate change projections for Sonoma County, hotter and drier, or hotter and wetter, with less frequent but more dramatic storms that will generate greater runoff and create flooding, and an increased likelihood of wildfires. We must not allow ourselves to become overwhelmed. There's a lot of work to be done, and smart people have been thinking this through for some time. Each of us can and must take action to reduce our greenhouse gas contribution. For example, according to the Regional Climate Protection Authority, 62% of greenhouse gases in Sonoma County come from transportation. 62. What do you think we could do to reduce that? For example, how about installing solar panels and electric vehicle charging stations at our businesses, residences, and parking lots? What if all the parking spaces around the plaza were for electric vehicles? What if the city government of Sonoma was a net zero energy entity? This is the goal of Lancaster, California. What if the entire city was a net zero energy city? This is the goal of Cambridge, Massachusetts. You are the decision makers to make this happen. It would be an important and worthwhile legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Is there any meeting dedications for tonight's council meeting? Seeing none, we're going to move on to presentations. Do I have someone from the World Elder Abuse Awareness Day? Mrs. Scarborough?
Whereas Sonoma senior citizens are valued members of our society, and abuse of elder people is a tragedy inflicted on vulnerable seniors, an ever-increasing problem in today's society that crosses all social, economic boundaries. And whereas elderly and dependent adults have the right to be protected under law from all types of abuse, including financial, physical, psychological, sexual, or neglect. And whereas combating abuse of older people will help improve the quality of life for Sonoma's seniors, and enable them to continue to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and important and active members of this community. The issue of elder abuse prevention requires continued community awareness and education. Whereas elder abuse should not be ignored nor endured. And whereas the City of Sonoma provides support, services, and education to seniors throughout, through the Vintage House Senior Center. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David Cook, Mayor of the City of Sonoma, do hereby proclaim June 15, 2015, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Would you like to say a few words?
I would. Thank you. I think this works. Thank you very much, Mayor Cook. And thank you, council. I won't take long tonight. We are joining, I believe, all of the other cities and towns in the county, as well as the Board of Supervisors, in bringing this proclamation and resolution at the supervisory level to the public, because unfortunately, elder abuse is a growing issue in our communities. In 2014, there were over 4,400 cases of elder abuse countywide. I'm glad to say it was only, but I'm startled to say it was, 295 cases in Sonoma Valley. We have here 295 purple flags that we'll be planting in the ground in front of Vintage House next Monday at 10:00 a.m., and I invite any of you council members to join us in putting these out. A breakdown quickly of the 295 cases in Sonoma Valley. 191 were from within the city of Sonoma. 36 were from the unincorporated area of the valley. And 68 were from the Ombudsman Program, which covers nursing homes, residential care, and assisted living facilities. It's important to understand that not every report turns into an actual case that needs investigation and prosecution. And it's great when referrals to adult protective services lead to referrals to information and supportive services, and that's enough. But the startling reality is that only, it's estimated that only one in 23 actual cases of abuse ever get to be reported. We have a very strong support system for our seniors here in Sonoma Valley, but we're here today to help bring the message home locally that it happens in every community, even in our wonderful Sonoma. One of the things we're trying to accomplish is to help people be aware of the fact that there are resources to support people who are neglecting themselves, or being neglected by care providers, or being abused by care providers, family members, or strangers. There are resources to support everyone in the process, and we need to not let elder abuse continue to rise. I would encourage each of you to, can I pass these to you, Mr. Mayor? And would you pass one to each of the council members? Please join me in wearing this purple pin on Monday, June 15. We would have done a proclamation that day, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day itself, but you have something else on your agenda that day, and there isn't a regular city council meeting. I encourage you to wear them from now through the 15th. And if anybody asks you why you're wearing it, what is this about elder abuse, refer them to any of the resources in that Senior Resource Guide, or to Vintage House Senior Center, and we will connect them with the support they need. I'd like to introduce to you someone who's with me tonight. Mary Kaufman is a former employee and Alameda County Area Agency on Aging, and currently our District One representative to Sonoma County's Area Agency on Aging, appointed by Supervisor Goran. She also comes from a tremendous background in providing senior services and resources in many counties, and joins me in thanking you tonight for your awareness, your attention to a growing problem. Thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like the presentation of the annual storm, storm water report and update on storm water program. City staff?
Evening, and thank you, council. My name's Chris Peg. I'm the Storm Water Compliance Specialist for the city. I work primarily out of the Public Works Department. Tonight, I'm going to be giving you a little bit of background on the storm water program that we operate in the city, and give you a forecast of things to come maybe. So, this might be familiar to you already, but just for the sake of being completely clear, we have two wastewater systems underneath our city. One carries sanitary sewage to a wastewater treatment plant, and one carries excess of storm water to flood control channels. The sanitary sewer is operated by the Sonoma County Water Agency, so we don't have any jurisdiction over it. The storm drain, however, is owned and operated by the City of Sonoma. The storm drain carries water from thousands of storm drain inlets in the City of Sonoma to receiving waters. And those receiving waters have other uses besides being a place to get rid of our storm water. The receiving waters in the Sonoma area are Sonoma Creek on the far west boundary of the city, Friar Creek runs right through the center of town, and on the east side, we have Nathanson Creek. All of these creeks join the Sonoma Creek main stem, and eventually drain to San Pablo Along the way, there are other uses that those waters could be used for, and those uses are protected. One of those is agricultural supply. We also have municipal supply and groundwater recharge, aquatic species preservation, fisheries preservation, and aquatic recreation. The uses of these waters that are protected has, those levels of protections haven't always existed. As recently as 1969, we had rivers that were in the United States that were catching on fire because they were so polluted. This is the Cuyahoga River. That particular fire galvanized the passage of the Clean Water Act in 1972, the main primary goal of which was to prohibit the discharge of all pollutants into navigable waters, such as our local creeks, by 1985. The Clean Water Act applies to point sources, meaning sources that have a definitive location. That means our storm drain outfalls are point sources, and they're covered by the Clean Water Act, as opposed to, say, non-point sources such as agricultural runoff. However, unlike most industrial pollutants, we couldn't stop discharging storm water outright, because excessive storm water causes flooding. So, the regulatory method for reducing the quantity of pollutants in conformance with the Clean Water Act while still maintaining the ability for municipalities to get rid of floodwaters was to, say, in essence, continue to discharge, but we're going to issue a permit, kind of like a driver's license, and it's going to have some provisions that you'll have to require. So, we were issued a permit almost two years ago now, and one of the first things that we have been working on is reviewing our municipal code, just to get ready to fully comply with this permit. We'll be looking at that more later on this agenda. What we've accomplished in the development of that was using a template prepared by some researchers at UC Davis to review 264 common gaps, conflicts, or other impediments to compliance that might exist in our code. And as I mentioned, those draft amendments to the municipal code are on the agenda later Another one of the requirements, and maybe we can start from receiving water and work backwards, is to assess the effectiveness of our programs. We monitor for two pollutants of concern that we suspect to only be generated within urban areas. Those are pesticides and pathogens, namely E. coli, because it causes sickness. To accomplish this receiving water monitoring, we've partnered with Sonoma Ecology Center and the County of Sonoma, and we've applied for and been awarded a competitive grant totaling a little over $900,000. All of that $900,000 isn't going to funding just monitoring. There are a lot of other objectives. However, that will cover the costs of our city's pesticide and pathogen monitoring going forward. Getting out of the receiving waters, there are some interventions that we can make within the storm drain system to reduce the quantity of pollutants that reach receiving waters. Since we were issued the permit, one of the main activities of the storm water program has been dry weather flow monitoring. This means that the city staff visit all of the 101 storm drain outfalls in the city to see whether they're flowing when there's no storm water. If there's no storm happening, and there's water coming out of a pipe, we suspect that there's a leak, a sanitary sewer cross connection, or illegal dumping, and we want to investigate that. However, most of the outfalls are connected to a large number of inlets, and it's more than labor-intensive to look at all the inlets. So, we go to the outfalls, and we fingerprint them. One of the things we did this year internally in the city is establish a small laboratory where we can fingerprint dry weather discharges when we detect them. We sample for chlorine, ammonia, color conductivity, deterrence hardness, pH, potassium, and turbidity. And once we have kind of the profile of what pollutants might be in that dry weather flow, then we can narrow down which inlets we want to investigate. So, of the 101 cert, outfalls that we reached this year, 10% were experiencing dry weather flows. And fortunately, when we fingerprinted them, there were no pollutants of concern in them. What we've learned through a little further investigation is that we do have really high groundwater in parts of town, and pairing that with some of the aging infrastructure means that some of it is infiltrating through leaking joints in the storm drain pipes. It's not a concern that this is happening. Most of the dry weather discharges are minor trickles. So, that was a positive outcome. Another intervention we can make on the storm drain system to prevent pollutants from making their way through it is to install trash capture devices. These are essentially sieves for large particulate trash. They go into the inlets and in the storm drain system, and the street sweeper or public works crew comes and takes the trash out and sends it to a solid waste collection facility instead of letting it go down the drain. Another component of the grant that I mentioned earlier is the funding of a road crossing survey. We will have a professional surveying all of the road crossings and outfalls in the city to assess whether they are causing excessive scour. For example, the outfall in this picture has eroded a little bit, and now when the water falls, it gains some energy and causes excessive sedimentation below it. The bulk of our program happens before things even get to the inlet, though. We want to stop pollutants at the source. One of the ways we do this is through, you know, public education and outreach. As pesticides are one of our pollutants of concern, we want to educate the public about ways to use fewer pesticides when managing pests in their homes and gardens. We keep a well-stocked shelf of outreach materials in the garden section at Friedman's, and last year, 550 of them have been taken home with shoppers. We keep track of which ones are going, so we have some kind of indirect indicator of which pests are causing the greatest, you know, heartburn for residents in the city. And we know how to better target our education to those specific pests. Another thing we do within the program is try and educate the public about the hazards of pet waste. The sign, you might have seen it, we've got these out at Peterson Field, right next to where we are tonight. Not only is pet waste left in areas where, you know, young people might come into contact with it, a health hazard, but all of the rainwater that hits those fields can pick up the pathogens that are in that pet waste and carry it into our receiving waters. We also have outreach for pools. Pool owners sometimes need to get rid of their pool water. Regrettably, sometimes they can't get the chemicals right, so they need to get rid of it, and we want to make sure that they get rid of it into the sanitary sewer or other appropriate location and not into a creek. We also have outreach materials for our restaurants, try and stem off some of the grease trap issues that come up in food preparation facilities. All right. So, in addition to trying to better educate the public about pollutants, we try and involve them as much as possible. We've been collaborating with the North Bay Watershed Association. In the last year, we've wrapped up a post-construction manual that will be available for developers who are looking to create more storm water-friendly developments. We have completed a program effectiveness assessment plan. That's a plan for collecting data about our program to better assess how well we're doing our jobs. And we also have a planned collaboration to do a cost-benefit analysis on installing more of those trash capture devices that I showed you guys in the inlets. We've also been collaborating with the Sonoma County Water Agency's Zone 3A Flood Protection Zone, been working primarily with them on the City Watersheds Project. We had a really great workshop on October 30th with many stakeholders to discuss potential multi-benefit storm water projects. We're looking specifically for projects that achieve, you know, flood habitat and recharge benefits. We've had a couple heckups along the way, but we have had some excellent dialogue with the public, and we hope to continue developing this project further. We also try and involve the public by providing a hotline for them to call and report illegal dumping to the storm drain. We work with youth and other fundraising groups that want to have a car wash fundraiser. Something we've developed in-house in the city is a, a storm water redirector. I'll call it that. This picture is of the, an inlet in front of the high school on Broadway, actually. And you can't tell, but what we've done is put in a basket, so to speak, under this cone and this grate that would otherwise collect the storm, the water from a fundraiser car wash at the high school and take it out to Nathanson Creek. This device fits under there, and it's got an electrical cord and a hose bib that's under that cone. So, when the fundraiser car wash happens, they just plug it in, and it's ground fault connection interrupter protected, so there's no danger. And they run a garden hose over to the sanitary sewer cleanout that's a little further up in the picture, and it collects all their water where it would have otherwise gone into a storm drain, and pumps it out to the sanitary sewer, so it goes to the treatment plant instead. This is something we can mobilize in about 15 minutes, and it's free. You just reserve it, and we'll put it in on a Friday the weekend before your car wash, and come pick it up the next Monday. So, we also mitigate some pollutants directly. This year, one of our main drives was to clean up the homeless encampments in the creeks before it rained. We finished this in early November. We noticed all of the campsites in collaboration with the Haven and the Police Department, and we provided each site with a tag, kind of like a coat check tag, so that after the, if the two weeks went by and the property wasn't claimed, even after we cleaned up, cleaned it up, we still stored it for 90 days at our corporation yard, and anybody who lost anything was free to call us and schedule an appointment to come pick up their stuff if they hadn't been able to move it out. We've also had a couple other issues. This is a really common one, actually. Painting contractor left some, some washout buckets in the backyard at a residence, and when it started raining, it filled those buckets up and started flowing out to the front yard. We've got a vacuum truck. We can clean these things up, take them out, settle them, dry them, and dispose of them correctly in-house. We also have sanitary sewer overflows occasionally. Those are the responsibilities of the Water Agency to clean up, but because we're in town and we're probably going to be the first responders, the first people called, we will go out and block the storm drain inlets. And unless it looks like there's going to be, you know, further property damage caused by an ongoing spill, we can keep the inlets blocked, protect the creeks until the Water Agency has a chance to get out with a vacuum truck and do their cleanup. So, overall, in the last year, we had 28 illicit discharges that we detected and eliminated. It's related to illicit discharge detection and elimination, but it's, it's a little more structured. Construction sites are a major area of our programs concerned. A lot of construction sites involve grading activities and vegetation removal, and when it rains on exposed soil, the soil likes to go places, usually into a storm drain. It can damage the property that it eroded on, and when it all comes together into a big river flowing out into the bay, it can cause regional problems. So, what we do in our program is inspect construction sites to make sure that they have adequate erosion and sediment controls installed. We've added some qualifications in-house. We did have a drought this winter, so we didn't have a, an overly burdensome inspection program, but we did complete 111 construction site inspections. And then, once everything's built, we want to also, you know, ensure that it's not increasing, that the development isn't increasing the quantity of runoff. So, one of the ways we're doing that is by adopting development guidelines and regulations that require new development to offset the increased runoff from new impervious areas. One of the ways we're doing this is through these rain gardens that you can see between the roadway and the sidewalk in this picture. It's basically a, an underground storage area with a garden on top that holds storm water and helps it recharge on-site instead of flowing into a storm drain. This is what they look like in cross-section. They do have overflows that do discharge to the traditional storm drain system when they're full, so they don't increase any flooding. We held October, stakeholder workshops to reach out to the development community in October, and we've collaborated region-wide to make sure that the requirements are consistent in Marin, Napa, and Sonoma Counties, because we know that the development community is portable, and they need some consistency, so they don't have to guess what she, which each regulating agency needs them to do. We also, as I mentioned, finished a program effectiveness assessment and improvement plan through North Bay Watershed Association, and we'll be implementing that in an ongoing fashion. And very, very recently, the State Water Board has amended our permit, so to speak, to include requirements that we capture all of the trash going into our storm drain system. So, that's the driver behind our, our work with North Bay Watershed Association to do a cost-benefit analysis on, on installing more trash capture devices, or looking at other controls for trash. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Is there any council questions on the presentation? Councilmember Edwards?
That last photograph wasn't Sonoma, was it?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Councilmember Aggermonte?
I just have one question. The trash capture, I call it a grill. It really causes some problems. Is there another design someday in the works? Because unless there's constant maintenance, I mean, you know, we, we don't have huge water issues right now, but, you know, unless there's constant maintenance.
Yeah, there are, there's been a proliferation of designs in response to the state's. Oh, excuse me. There have been, there have- There have been, there has been a proliferation of designs that are designed to address the problems that come up with these trash grates. One of the major concerns is if they aren't maintained regularly or even immediately before a storm, they might cause flooding. Most of them are designed to maintain the full hydraulic capacity of the inlet. But at this moment, we're, we're looking to do a cost-benefit analysis to find out whether it will be more cost-effective to install trash capture devices at the inlets or to do other programmatic institutional controls that might control the trash itself at the source. It might be a public education program. It might be changed regulations on single-use food containers. The institutional controls could be equally as varied as the engineering controls. And we just don't know which direction that's going to go until we work with the North Bay Watershed Association and get some professional opinions on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards?
Aren't there some communities that are doing adopt a drain program and so on? Have you heard of that?
I haven't, actually.
Community-minded folks, I can probably dig up where I read that.
I'd be very interested in that.
Where they adopt a storm drain, and, you know, when we have an event, they come out and they take care of it. Something to consider, especially with your, the size of your grant, might be interesting.
Absolutely.
And I guess the question I had on the slide that showed the contractor that had let, let the buckets was paint, was, was there a fine? Does the city of Sonoma, do we, do we fine on that?
Our procedure usually doesn't, we have a procedure. It's in Title 13 in the municipal code. First-time violations receive a verbal warning.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other questions? Thank you, Chris, for the great presentation. And we'll move on to the consent counter. All items listed on the consent counter are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by one single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public interest specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Is there any council questions? With that, I will take it out to public. Seeing none, I will bring it back for council discussion and action. Count, our Vice Mayor Gallion?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent calendar of June 1 in its entirety.
I'll second that.
If there's not any other discussion, I will call for a roll-call vote.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye.
With that, we had a five-to-o vote on the consent counter. Consent counter of the successor agency. All items listed on this consent counter are considered to be routine also and will be acted upon by one single motion. Item 5A is approval of the portions of the minutes of May 18, 2015, city council meeting pertaining to the successor agency. Is there any questions of council? With that, I will take it to public. Seeing none, I will bring it back to council for discussion and action. Councilmember Hundley?
I would like to make a motion to approve the portions of the minutes of the May 18, 2015 successor agency.
I'll second.
City Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Without any other further discussion, we will call for a roll-call vote.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye.
For public, we just approved, five-to-o, the approval of the portions of the minutes of May 18, 2015, city council meeting pertaining to the successor agency. Public hearings, item 6A, discussion, consideration, and possible action to conduct the first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Sonoma amending titles 13, 14, and 19 of the Sonoma Municipal Code by amending the stormwater and development regulations as they pertain to the city's legal authority and ability to comply with NPDES permit number 2013-0001-DWQ. Stormwater Specialist?
Thank you again. This is kind of the nuts and bolts end of the program that I just wrote a report on. Just really brief background. City staff reviewed the purpose and scope of the statewide regulations applicable to municipalities discharging stormwater to waters of the U.S. This set of ordinance amendments stems from the state-issued permit requirements, namely, the requirement to amend local ordinances to remove gaps and impediments to stormwater permit compliance. The proposed amendments were crafted after a thorough review of the Sonoma Municipal Code using a template recommended by the state and prepared by researchers at UC Davis. And in very brief summary, the proposed amendments modify outdated or inaccurate definitions of basic terms used throughout the code, define incidental runoff to establish a reasonable lower threshold below which discharge prohibitions do not apply, to preserve the intent of prohibitions without creating undue burden, adopt by reference the technical guidelines contained in the Bay Area Stormwater Management Agencies Association Post-Construction Manual. The amendments remove language, the strict interpretation of which may preclude many of the stormwater requirements in the Bay Area Stormwater Management Agencies Association Post-Construction Manual, namely, the onsite retention of stormwater. The amendments modify open space requirements and create, establish goals to incentivize stormwater-friendly uses of open space and make a variety of other small changes to fast-track program implementation and clarify the municipal code sections pertaining to stormwater management.
Thank you. Is there any council questions? Seeing none, I will go to public. Seeing none, I will come back for council direction and action on this item.
Mr. Mayor, if it's the council's desire, the motion should be to waive the first reading and introduce this particular ordinance.
Okay. Do I have a colleague on the council that would like to make that motion? Councilmember Edwards? Oh, Vice Mayor Gallion, sorry.
Okay. I'd like to go ahead and waive the first reading and actually introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of Sonoma amending titles 13, 14, and 19 of the Sonoma Municipal Code by amending the stormwater and development, development regulations as they pertain to the city's legal authority and ability to comply with the NPDES permit 2013-001-DWQ.
Well done, Vice Mayor Gallion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, City Clerk, I will call for a roll-call vote.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye.
With that, for the public, we, we had a public hearing and waived the first reading to put this together. Regular calendar city council, item 7A, discussion and consideration of possible action to provide comments and consensus agreements on issues related to the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency, SCWMA. And before City Major, I had a note up here that we're not being televised. I just wanted to get his attention. Are we being televised?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cook. Members of the city council. The Sonoma County Waste Management Agency, JPA, agreement has a fixed term, which is due to expire in 2017. The renewal has gained urgency due to consequences to construction of a new compost facility and the timeline deadlines contained in the zero-discharge plan to achieve regulatory compliance. The agency board sees the need to bring the decision on the JPA's future to each member jurisdiction. Staff has provided background on the original formation of the Sonoma County Waste Management Authority as the JPA back in 1992 as a result of the then Assembly Bill AB 939. This was part of the staff report in your agendas, and as such, I won't be focusing on that history and information. Rather, the presentation tonight will be contained to the topics that are brought forward by the Waste Management Agency Board as critical to the update of the extension of the JPA. In early 2014, the board commissioned R3 consultants to use the listing of the current Sonoma County Waste Management Agency activities and determine which of these were essential to the health, safety, or required by law or regulations, or might potentially have negative effects if shut down or curtailed. The R3 report recommended that the agency and member jurisdictions continue to provide the agency's current four core services on a regional basis. That report concluded that, quote, "It does not appear that member jurisdictions could realize an overall net cost savings by pursuing alternative services to the four core programs provided by the agency," end quote. And that, quote, "On an individual basis, the agency's current programs appear to be more cost-effective than those identified alternatives in almost all cases." Because the original JPA agreement is over 20 years old, several changes to the agreement have been put forth for discussion as suggested by the majority of the agency board during two facilitated strategy work sessions. The Sonoma County Waste Management Agency has assembled these proposed agreement changes into a matrix of issues which is intended to be used to evaluate and record the opinions of all member jurisdictions. So, to assist in formulating the conversation, I will be presenting each question on a PowerPoint slide, which you'll see on your, on the overheads. And this will facilitate the comment. There are 10 questions that we will be reviewing. And Councilmember Aggermonte actually sits as Sonoma's representative on the agency board. And also with us tonight is Henry Micus and Patrick Carter of the Waste Management Agency staff, who are in the audience, and they will assist in responding to questions and providing information. So, essentially, what we're going to do is walk through each of these 10 questions, and we're going to have a discussion and, you know, straw vote consensus, comment, feedback from you as council that can come back to the agency board as feedback from Sonoma's, from Sonoma's council. And that's what they're seeking from each one of the cities that are part of the JPA. So, question one, and Gay will actually bring these slides forward. So, section one, or it's question one, excuse me. Do you want to continue a regional approach, which is the current approach, for dealing with the following programs? And these are the four programs currently with the Waste Management Agency. And those are composting, household hazardous waste. The agency board's position in June of 2014, when they had their strategic planning session, nine of the members, the consensus was, of the members, was yes on to continue the regional approach on all four of dealing with these, with these programs. So, basically, all cities and the counties, they're asking to participate, continue participating cooperatively on these programs. The issues and the alternatives might be to include the individual cities of managing these programs on their own or through contract or other arrangement. Essentially, at this point, from staff's perspective, Sonoma essentially would not have the capacity to undertake these, these programs at this time. So, essentially, what, you know, this issue is, from the board's perspective, do you believe that this is, these four programs should continue with the regional, with the regional approach?
And I guess my question is, how did Sonoma vote last year? When you said it's a consensus?
It's a consensus of the board in their strategic planning session that all cities and the counties, as they, in their strategic planning, felt that they, that this should continue as a regional approach.
But do we know in 2014 how Sonoma voted?
It would have been, I would assume, because it's a consensus vote, that we voted yes.
Yes. Steve was there, and this, all nine members voted in consensus. So...
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Gallion?
I, I just have a question. You know, when we're talking about this, and we have our contractor here in Sonoma, I assume that all of these have been vetted so that there's no interaction that would disregard our contract with that garbage collector. Is that correct? I mean...
They are part of that, they are part of...
They are part of this, okay. So, we're not disrupting anything that we currently have in place by saying yes.
Yes, because they're, yeah, their franchise is, is a part of, and they, they operate under, you know...
Well, I know we're unique in that, so I wanted to make sure that that was actually understood. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hundley?
So, it's my understanding that all of this is paid for by tipping fees at the landfill? Would the, like, what, what would it look like if either the city contracted it, would the tipping fees be less, and then we would collect money some other way to pay for this ourselves? Or how does the cost of it shift?
Henry, could I, could I, through the mayor, would you like to ask?
Yes. Henry, if you want to come up?
...some of these?
You have to come up here. Evening. Thank you for doing this. I know it's going to be, is it on?
Yes.
It's going to be a long process, and I appreciate the patience. Do you mind repeating the question again, please?
Sure. It's, my understanding is, these programs right now are paid for by a part of the tipping fee at the landfill?
Yes, ma'am.
So, if it changed, and the city was responsible for it, how would the cost shift? Like, would tipping fees go down a little bit, and then we would collect money our own way to pay for it somehow?
You'd have to find some way to collect the money to pay for the program yourself.
And the tipping fees would adjust accordingly?
Not necessarily so. You have to think about, there's lots of different scenarios. Like, say, Sonoma dropped out, and the other nine members stayed, and there was an agency of nine instead of 10. There'd have to be some kind of a formula. I would say, in a simplistic way, the easiest way would be for whatever part of that tip fee surcharge that came from Sonoma residents would, could be set aside for the city's use.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other questions on this item? If not, we'll call for a straw poll.
Is there comments or consensus that the council?
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Could I, could I ask a question here just for a second? I don't mean to be interruptive here, but how do we want to involve the public on this process? Because typically, you want to get the public comment before the council takes...
We can go, you want it, we can go to public after...
I don't know. Do you know, Henry, how the other councils did it, how they do it?
Where it was most effective seemed to me to be that when there was one particular question that was being addressed by the council, they'd have the discussion, ask questions, and then they'd have public comment on that item only.
Okay.
That way, it was focused on one subject.
Great. Is there any other questions for staff on question one? Seeing none, I will bring it to public for any questions or public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. And is there any, any other discussion, or we'll call for a roll-call or a straw poll vote?
I'd just like to make a comment. Did you have a comment? I'm sorry. I'd just like to make a comment, and I have to check with Carol, because I'm a committee member, and I haven't been on it very long. However, I know that the, these activities themselves are very time-consuming, very expensive, and I would imagine a recalculation of the funding would probably be convoluted. So, as a voting member from this committee, I would, my vote will be yes to, to continue.
Hundley?
Yeah, I was just going to comment that since we are a small city, I don't think we're in a position to profit from composting like a larger city might. So, it wouldn't make sense to, to take this in-house, because we don't really have the staff for it.
So, on all four, A, B, and C, and D, your favor?
So, I am yes for all of these.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
I concur. Having seen how this organization has worked in the past few years, I feel that we are getting the, the best of the best at this time, and I would like to see it continue. For the city of Sonoma, resources to go ahead and handle. These issues are huge, and that's something that, if we can work with others to share the burden, I think, like our other...
And I also would say yes on this. So we can move to the next question. City Mayor?
All right. So the next question is, what is your preference on who performs those services? And the, on each one of these services, the board's position in, in their strategic planning session in June was, and some of the options was for the agency to perform all of the, was for all of the services, for the county to perform the services, or a mix between the agency and the county. And in the board discussions for composting, there was consensus that the agency would continue through February of 2017, but reevaluate after February 2017. And that was, as you're aware, with some of the conversations, and you've probably read some articles in the, in the newspapers, that, that the whole composting operation, there is a lot of discussion on the composting and some of the issues related to composting. There was consensus of the agency that household hazardous waste would be best left with the agency and managed by the agency. Education, best left with the agency consensus, and consensus on planning and reporting, best left with the agency. So that was how they voted on essentially program responsibilities. So there were, there was, there was actually some discussion on how this, how this might, these programs might be managed differently in the, in the out-years. So that is an area, area of discussion with relate, with related to those different, those different programs. The composting does, you know, while they're all covered under the tipping fees, the tipping fees, the composting component has separate accounting on income, so that's carved out separately. The rest of the tipping fee surcharge is accounted for separately, is kind of, within one revenue, within one revenue stream, approximately 80% of that portion of the revenue is accounted for by household hazardous waste. 18% is comprised of cost of education, and 2% goes towards planning and reporting on that tipping fee surcharge. So again, most of the, the consensus of the agent, of the agency board was to, for B, C, and D to be handled by the agency, and consensus for composting was to continue with the agency through 2017, and still discussion on what would happen to composting in the out-years. So, Henry, is there anything more on that topic that you wanted to add?
Yes, ma'am, if I might.
The mic is yours?
I didn't know if it would help if I explained the finances a little bit and kept it kind of quick, okay? Because that seems to be a big driver. Compost materials that are inbound are charged a tip fee. It's an average of about $35 a ton, and that's what pays for that program. By our JPA charter, we're required to keep those funds separate from the other programs. That's why, when Carol said there's a car out, it's, that's the one program that's easy to keep separate money-wise. The other three programs are paid for by a tip fee surcharge. Until recently, it was $5.95 a ton. This last year, it was reduced to $4.85 a ton, because, under the county's master operating agreement for the landfill with Republic, instead of assessing the surcharge and other fees, the county's going to charge, related to county activities, on just trash, they're going to charge on everything coming in the gate. So what we basically did was, looked at what our total income needed for a year to support the programs was, and divided by the, the new tons with everything, and came up with a lower rate. HHW is about 80% of the money. That is a, an entirely free program, where in last years, we've done easily well over 2 million pounds of materials of that sort that we've collected and disposed of. It's done through the toxics facility at the central landfill, plus we do community toxic collections every week in all our member jurisdictions. Each city has at least three, if not more, of those events in the course of a year. And of course, the Sonoma Valley, because of some of your communities that are so active, actually gets several more. We go to Oakmont, Glenellen, and other places in, in the Sonoma Valley. And their citizens bring their stuff, and it's free. They don't have to pay. So that's a direct benefit. Education's about 18%. And a point I'd like to make about that real quick is, with your contractors, Sonoma Garbage Collectors, I think they really benefit by our education program, because I think the thing that we offer, education-wise, that's really a benefit, is it's a level, objective dissemination of, of information all about trash and recycling. It makes no favorites. It doesn't matter if you're the Rado Group that has nine franchises and millions of dollars of income, or Sonoma Garbage Collectors, who has one customer and is small. It's the same for industrial carting, or anybody else in the business. So there was a question earlier about, you know, how, how does that work with them? I think they really benefit from our education program, because they're treated equally with everybody else. Planning and reporting is kind of interesting. That, we started to do in 1996 as an amendment to our agreement. We're actually recognized as a regional agency by the state. And when R3 did their analysis of our finances, as Carol mentioned, just about 2% of our surcharge money goes to that. But what we found out when R3 did their analysis was, if the agency was to dissolve, or if a member was to go out on their own, they'd actually have to do a reset. In order for planning and reporting, there was a, a baseline survey done a number of years ago, the agency paid for, and if anybody was to go on their own, they'd have to actually start over and do a baseline on their own. And depending on the size of the jurisdiction, R3's estimate was that cost could be anywhere from $20,000 to $100,000 one time to get started, not including the staff costs every year. That was a surprise when we had that done. Certainly, it helps the agency's picture, but you need to be aware that that, that particular item has some financial consequences that aren't positive to people. So that's the money end of things.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there any questions for staff on question two? Count, Vice Mayor Gallion?
So when you're talking about the composting, and the fact that this would be in February 2017, the agency or the board itself would be going out for, they, what would the process be about reevaluating it?
There's two parts to that, ma'am. First of all, when the county did their MOA with Republic, they expressed a desire to make composting be a Republic activity as opposed to an agency activity. At the time that was first discussed two years ago, it didn't receive overwhelming support. There was some support, but it certainly wasn't unanimous. In order for that program to be removed from the agency, it would have to be a resolution by every one of our members. One member could stop that, and I think the county realized that a couple of years ago. So they, in their MOA, they have a timeline that, for 18 months from the day that the MOA starts, they have an option to be able to work that out with the agency and the other member cities about what could happen with compost. So that's not been resolved. There are some cities that think it has value being independent of the county, and some cities that feel compost would be better served by the county. I mean, I can see both sides, frankly. I think, you know, with the, the agency and Sonoma Compost as a tenant on the county's property, that's been problematic with our lawsuit and other issues. But on the other hand, I also feel in my heart that Sonoma Compost is unique and provides a, a product and a service that really suits our community, and I think we'd lose that if we went otherwise. I think, you know, they have a, they have a niche and a devotion to our citizens that's really commendable, and it would be lost. So, I, you know, that, that one conflicts me.
Right. And then, would you say that, you know, there'll be, if, if the consensus comes back and everyone wants to go through this, that would be obviously one of the major things that would be on the, on the docket to resolve prior to, you know, the actual termination date?
Yes, ma'am. And actually, what happened at the June meeting was that the, the board recognized to get the decision about the agency future to move forward, this thing about putting compost kind of on, on the burner for later was a way of compromise to get the, the conversation to go ahead. Because frankly, that compost could be changed anytime, really, whether you have an agreement now, or a, a new one or an old one. It's, it's a matter of what the cities want to do.
Okay. Thank you, because did not want to be entering into more political waters, okay?
Councilmember Hunley?
So here, the question is, our preference on who performs, agency or the county? By county, does that mean everyone goes their separate ways and handles it themselves, or would we actually be?
No, ma'am. The idea is that the county would take over these activities as a county function as opposed to an independent agency.
But would they be collected the same, and then just taken, taken somewhere else? Or?
Yeah, they would collect the money, and then they would perform the services.
I mean, the actual, like, you know, materials to be disposed of?
City Attorney, you have a question?
Just a couple of comments. A little bit before and during the time that the JPA was beginning to circulate a, an amendment to the existing joint powers agreement to extend it another 20-plus years, the city attorneys and the county council began to meet together, sometimes with a special counsel for the agency, and oftentimes not, to get a sense of what made sense. Did the, the extension of document appear to reflect the interests of the cities and the member agencies? And there were a lot of discussions that surrounded that, one of which led to a recommendation by our group to meet with some of the directors, and Henry, and special counsel, and we asked Henry to develop a white paper, sort of describing some of the major issues that he saw that warranted an extension of this JPA by a number of years. As you know, this will come up tonight, which should be 25 years, it should be indefinite. And Henry prepared a very excellent document describing the operations of the agency. I don't know whether you received that, but as I recall, a couple important things came, became apparent to me that I didn't know before, that, for example, the composting and the household hazardous waste programs are not actually performed by members of the agency, staff members. It's, they do it by contract, and I don't know how many in separate contracts you're overseeing, but it sounded like a lot. I can't remember, but it seemed like quite an administrative, I'm not going to say nightmare, but an administrative challenge to have all these contractors being overseen to make sure these programs worked effectively. Second of all, there's this litigation that was filed under the Clean Water Act against the county, the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency, Sonoma Compost, claiming that the program, the composting program, was not being run in accordance with, with the law. That rainwater would mix with the compost and flow off the site and into the, the waters of the United States. That lawsuit was recently settled, and part of that settlement involved the discontinuation of the composting operation in the fall of this year. And I guess they're going to be outhauling for a while.
That's correct.
And one of the major reasons why the agency, as articulated to us primarily through the special counsel, wanted to extend the JPA, was to assure the agency a long period of time to finance the money, to pay off the money necessary to build a new composting facility at a different site, or potentially doing something at the central landfill for a long period of time, a more permanent solution. And maybe, Henry, you could help the council come to grips with these sort of warring and conflicting events that have occurred. We now have, the composting facility is going to stop operation in the fall. We have the agency's own board saying that the composting program should continue until February 2017, but then we reevaluate it. That seems to undermine the notion that we need to have a longer JPA, and we need it now to assure that if we go out to build this new facility, we can get funding that would need to be paid off over a long period of time.
Good point, good question. Thank you. Two years ago, the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board let the agency know through their permit with the county that the compost site had to achieve a zero discharge status. It wasn't a hard date. They asked us to prepare a plan to do so, and that is something we've been working on since. We submitted a revised plan to them summer of 2014 that they've endorsed, and that plan had several facets about getting our compost site into compliance with that no discharge of stormwater requirement. Everybody agreed, water board, our agency board, our staff, many of our customers, that the best way to get to zero discharge wasn't to take an old site that was 20-some years old, old technology, and do Band-Aids and baling wire. The better solution would be to build a new site that was properly engineered to take care of stormwater issues. And that fit, because the agency had been looking at, had been going through the process of finding a new site, selecting a new site for some years. That started in the late 2000s, when the county was going to divest itself at the landfill, and it was clear the compost was going to have to find a new home. So with the thought that building a, a new place to current technology that can manage the water properly is the best solution, the way the agency's currently formulated, we're not allowed to bond or take out any indebtedness. So the only answer for us, if we move ahead with a compost site, a new one, is to do a design, build, permit, operate contract, and that would require amortizing the cost of construction over a sufficient amount of time to make the thing affordable. And we've done the math, and we figured out that 25 years is a nice number that works, because you look at a new site that's going to cost $50 million, but you amortize it over 25 years, it's not a huge jump over current prices. It's affordable. And in fact, we look at what that would affect the per-can rate in the cities, you know, what people actually pay. It would be a couple to three bucks a can per month, because you're amortizing, you know, a whole lot of tonnage over a long period of time. So that ties into why the agency would like to have this settled, because on our timeline, next month, at our agency meeting, we're supposed to be considering certifying the final EIR for a new site selection, and then selecting a site. And the next step would be to go through permitting process and then procurement for somebody to build the thing next year. We're forced to outhaul, because we've had to shut the site with this lawsuit. We have to do something with the materials that are generated, so we're going to outhaul them, but we want to minimize the time that happens, because it's so expensive. It's going to cost us about $2 million a year above our current cost structure to outhaul the compost materials. And so we want to, even though things have changed since we first talked about building a new site, it still seems to be the best thing to do. So that's a little bit of the math and the timeline and how it all hangs.
Councilmember Hunley?
Was the decision or the plans to build a new facility, was that after this June 2014 vote?
No, ma'am.
I'm wondering why, last year, they wanted to punt it, but did they already have the scenario in front of them that we're looking at today?
Yes, ma'am. We, that, that, looking for a new site's been going on since. Patrick, is it 2007, 2006?
Yeah, 2007.
Is there any other questions on that?
I just have a comment.
Okay.
If you don't mind. With respect to number two, what is your preference on who performs these, those services? I'm, having served on this committee, really, not that long, but trying to, as Mr. Walters says, it's a, it's a real difficult situation. But my overriding issue for me is that it shares the cost for the cities, number one, and it, and this agency is really a checks and balances for what is going on, because this is a huge industry, and there's a lot of money involved. So members of this agency really represent all of the cities, and so they are, in some way, possibly it's not the right term, but watchdogs, to know what's going on with this huge agency. So for me, I know that I will vote to support that.
Okay. Councilmember Edwards?
Maybe instead of watchdogs, a neutral party might be a nicer, nicer way to say it.
Well, that's good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I guess my only question on planning and reporting, when I went to Napa and the mayor was talking about the earthquake, the number-one problem they had with FEMA was the fact that they never reported what came from the city of Sonoma, or city of Napa, and what came from the out of the area, the unincorporated area. I would assume here with the JPA and dealing with FEMA, you guys have a strategy for that program?
You talking about reporting waste from an earthquake?
Reporting waste from an earthquake. That was, they said that was the number-one concern that we probably should look at, because FEMA was not, FEMA was not going to reimburse the city, because they did not report what came from the city and what didn't, what came from the unincorporated area. So I'm just curious how we do this in, in our JPA.
Well, we've never encountered this, first of all. I mean, we've not had an earthquake in my time. I've been here, this is my fifth year, and I don't think there's been one before then. So it's kind of a unique situation. I do know, and Patrick helped me out here, because that's part of what he does, but we do have a way of tracking waste that comes in from different jurisdictions. Do you want to address that at all? And the other thing I'll just share with you is... I do know, and Patrick helped me out here because that's part of what he does, but we do have a way of tracking waste that comes in from different jurisdictions. Do you want to address that at all? The other thing I'll just share with you is, I came here from the East Coast where we had hurricanes and snowfall, and I've had some experience with FEMA and what you're telling me resonates. And it's as much on their part being very difficult with the record-keeping. Place I worked learned the hard way, just like Napa has, and the next time it happened, we did a whole lot better because we understood what the game was.
Yeah.
So...
I'm Patrick Carter. I'm one of Henry's employees and an agency employee. And just because I'm the one that files the annual reports through CalRecycle, which is the state agency that deals with waste-related issues, the landfills are required to ask what the source is of that material, whether it's city, county, and whatnot. And so part of that is, it's really on the person that's delivering to give an accurate representation of where they're bringing that material from. In an emergency circumstance, I can understand that can kind of get jumbled up. But we do have a pretty accurate breakout of where it is, what source the material comes from. And so that is good feedback to hear from Napa, that in an emergency circumstance that that can become an issue. In the 2006 storms where we had some flooding here in Sonoma County right around Christmas time that year, I do know that some of our agency staff was actually helping with the emergency routing trucks and whatnot. So we did have some play in there. And I don't, and I think FEMA reimbursed in that flood as well. And I think they were able to, maybe, maybe it's because some of our staff had an involvement in that and we were helping routing the trucks that we're, I don't think that that was the issue that came up during that storm, so for what it's worth.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go out to public. And seeing none, I'll bring it back for any further comments or a straw poll vote. And to be fair, we'll start with Councilmember Hunley this time and we'll kind of work through here.
Well, before I give a decision, I would like to know if anyone else has comments about this.
Seeing none?
Any comments? I, for these, I support them staying under the agency for all four.
Vice Mayor Gallion.
I would concur in the respect that I really feel that this composting issue is going to be one that's going to have to be resolved. And I think frankly, our representative here on the agency itself, the board, you know, has our thoughts behind what we're looking at. And I feel confident that she can bring it home.
Councilmember Edwards?
I concur with the agency handling.
Councilmember Agamate?
I agree with the others.
And I also agree. So that would be a five to oh. Question three?
Okay. Question three is about the proposed term and the options set forth are 25 years or no fixed term. The board's position in June of 2014, the majority preferred no fixed term.
Is there any questions of staff? Vice Mayor Gallion?
Well, in light of what we've just heard here concerning the composting issue, I'd like a little bit more background on why they decided no fixed term.
I think it was pretty simple. Why do this now with all the heartache and all the time spent and have to do it again in 25 years? If it's working, why not leave it the way it is?
Did that answer your question?
In other words, what they're saying is that these responsibilities will hereafter be a responsibility of how this vote or this decision comes back?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding it because they're not talking about dissolving the agency, they're talking about just these particular parameters. What I mean is, is that there's other things that are coming forward here that I have a concern about, and that was establishing the agency and making sure that the agency stays permanent.
Mm-hmm.
All right? And so to me, the fact is, is that I would like that, as long as the agency is in effect, that they take all of these issues to remain exactly as they will see this vote going back to them.
Yes ma'am.
And that there will be no term about how this is all done. Except, I do not understand what's going to happen with composting.
I think what's going to happen with composting is somewhere in the next year, year and a half, there will have to be a separate decision made with our board and our member agencies about whether compost should stay with the agency or could be a county responsibility.
Okay.
The thing I need to add here is, we've, much as I think the compost should stay with the agency, trying to be objective as possible, I have to tell you that we've gone through the financial analysis and the agency could survive without compost. You know, part of the beauty of it being separate managed money is the other stuff still goes on regardless. So, you know, when you make this decision, you need to be aware that taking compost away is not a death knell for the agency.
Okay. That makes me feel a little bit better.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, on there.
Councilmember Hunley?
I was thinking that with the, if the agency was to pursue constructing a new facility for the compost, then they would need some sort of guarantee that the program was going to be around 25 years to get financing to do it. So with no fixed term, does that mean there's going to be a minimum to cover the financing? Or like...
The idea with no fixed term is in perpetuity.
But would there be, but if there's no fixed, does that mean in five years, the city can just back out?
That could happen at any time anyway.
If I might address that issue, one of the things that will be important from a legal perspective, and it's typically included in all JPAs, is a mechanism for individual members to withdraw. Or are all of the members agreeing to discontinue or dissolve the agency in its entirety? And those mechanisms typically have financial price texts or strings attached to them. So the city, assuming that this agency, for example, went out and acquired real property through condemnation, probably, and then built this facility, I'm not sure whether it can be built by the time that they hope it will be built, assuming it is, and five years later, this council, whoever it might be, that at that time decides this program is just not working very well. Huge cost overruns. I'm giving hypotheticals, right? Please don't take what I'm saying as what I predict to be happening here. But the council may become at that time disenchanted with being a member and it would wish to pull out and conduct its own composting program through your own local garbage collector. This agreement hopefully will have a way for the council to move out of the agency. You will end up probably paying in some fashion for your fair share of the cost that the agency has incurred to the point in time where you wish to remove yourself or the city from the agency.
Thank you.
If I, through the chair, if I may add just a little comment, it sounded, the question I was hearing was how do we have the financial assurance to build a compost facility if there's no term necessarily that goes with it? Where the compost site is currently, and it's one of the potential future sites, is the central landfill, which is owned by the county of Sonoma. And we operate there currently under a licensed lease agreement. And I would imagine if we were to continue operating at that site, that there would be another, another license or lease that goes, that would go for 25 years, for example. And that would give us the assurance that we had the ability to operate on that site under the conditions that are put forth under there and that we would have the flow that comes into it as a mechanism for our contractor to build out that site. So maybe I was answering a question that wasn't asked, but I just thought I'd add that out there, that we are a tenant on that property.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Councilmember Edwards?
Just a comment. I mean, I'd be more in favor of a 25-year with some sort of option for another 25 years as with a lease or something like that with a building. Yeah, I mean, technology may change completely in 25 years where there may not be a need to continue. I mean, who knows? But I prefer not to just create something that goes forever. Does it make sense to me?
Is there any other questions before I go to this?
No, I'm comfort, as a committee member, I'm comfortable with the 25 years. I mean, it establishes some kind of a boundary. I mean, that's what I'm feeling. Because it, just the other way, it's, you know, for funding and all of those things that might come to question. So I'm comfortable with the 25 years. But that's just, you know...
Yeah.
Yeah, from a funding perspective, I think just within commercial entrepreneurial business, not government business, I mean, 25 years is a nice number to, as you guys have stated. The banks and funding agencies look at that as a very positive thing. And if there was some sort of option, that would be even more attractive, I think, to those lending institutions.
If there's not any other questions, I'll go out to public for public comment from questions. Seeing none, I will come back for more discussion and a straw poll vote. And Vice Mayor Gallion would be the first one to, in the turn. But did you want to, did you want to discuss a little bit more what we were talking about, the 25-year?
I think I can just state how I want to be and then other people can state how they want to be. And we either have consensus or we don't. But I am going to say that I want to stay with the majority, preferring no fixed term because I think the devil will be in the details of question number four.
And do we know how Sonoma voted in 2014?
No.
Henry?
You learn from your mistakes. One of the things we did that I regret was a lot of the votes that our, straw votes that our board took in June were done by raised hands. And of course, you know, at the time, everything was fine. Afterwards, questions came up and we couldn't really tell by the tape. So some of these, I have no idea who said yes or no, and I'm very sorry about that. It won't, if we do something like that again, we've learned our lesson.
That's fine, thank you.
Raised hands don't work real well.
Yeah. Councilmember Edwards?
I think the 25-year is a good number to start with and some sort of option to move it forward.
Councilmember Agamate?
25 years is fine for me.
And I also support 25 years.
So we have a quorum of three to two because I would, I would be probably wanting to go with the majority of no fixed term.
Question three?
Or four?
Four.
I was reading them wrong.
Okay. Do you have, do you wish to have a mechanism for members to opt out of some of the agency programs? And the board apparently didn't reach consensus and there are many different options. And so this was kind of segue to our city attorney talking about, you know, if, you know, if a particular agency wanted to opt out of a particular program. And so this is, you know, some of the discussion was, should there, you know, should an agency be allowed to opt out of a particular program? HHW or, or should there be opt-out fees and timeframes? If you do opt out, is, are there, would there be penalty provisions written in or you can only opt, you can't basically jump in and jump out of programs? So, so should there be a mechanism written in to, you know, to the JPA agreement that says, you know, if you do, then this happens, you know? If, then what? You know, that so that, you know, an agency just can't be jumping in? Should there be a provision or a mechanism for members to be able to opt out of some of the agency programs? Or is it an all-in program?
City Attorney?
Yes, this provision actually is in the existing JPA. City members can opt out of specific programs that are implemented and approved by the JPA board. This came largely as a result of the anti-plastic bag ordinance controversy that arose about two years ago when the agency decided to adopt its own anti-plastic bag ordinance and then desired to enforce it in its member agencies jurisdictions. Both Santa Rosa and Petaluma city attorneys and their councils were concerned about JPA having the power to adopt an ordinance that then allowed that agency to move into individual member agencies jurisdictions and enforce them. The city of Sonoma council approved that ordinance and approved the enforcement being undertaken by the agency, the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency. Other cities did not, including Santa Rosa and Petaluma. There may have been, Healsburg may have also decided no, it went along with it?
It was just Santa Rosa.
Just Santa Rosa? Did Petaluma eventually go along with it?
Yes.
There you go. So the question was whether or not city should be allowed to opt out of programs that the agency wants to establish and implement. And that's sort of the historical background for, for that particular issue. It's really sort of your call, what you wish to do. I think certainly if you are willing to allow cities to opt out of specific programs, and this is different from the comments I was making earlier, which really was to actually leave the agency altogether. That was, my earlier comments were talking about members just simply saying, we no longer want to participate at all. But if there's certain programs, if indeed this council or members of the council are interested in allowing that to happen, certainly there would need to be agreed upon set of conditions. And those, as the vice mayor indicated, the devil certainly isn't in the details for that kind of an opt-out provision. And that will entail quite a bit of negotiating.
Councilmember Hunley?
If cities were able to opt out, particularly out of compost, would this affect the costs for the remaining cities? And if everyone was opting out and there was only one city left, would that, what would that look like? Would the program get shut down?
That has no easy answer. Because it all depends on who and how many, because small cities, big cities, it makes a difference. When you have a city of 10,000 or 12,000 people, that's a certain amount of the pie money-wise. You have a city of 150,000 people like Santa Rosa, it's a huge difference. So at that one, it really depends on who and how. I mean, there's no way to answer that that I can say, other than it would have to be worked out.
So...
I'm sorry to be vague, but, you know, think about...
Vice Mayor Gallion?
My question is, this is like on an issue, you know, if a city decided that they wanted to opt out of it. All right, the question would be, number one, you still can't pass something unless you have a majority.
That's correct.
All right. So in other words, if, if the vote was, you had eight to one, all right, and, and the, or 10 to one, whatever, nine to one, okay, then the question would just be at that point, that one is opting out.
Mm-hmm.
All right? So you already have a majority of people adopting whatever was, you know, on the table at that time. So when we talk about this particular item, all right, if they, if a city, if, if, let's just say it was very close, you still had a majority, but it was a majority only by one, all right, of who was doing it, would have disastrous effect, wouldn't it, on the hazardous waste program?
Mm-hmm.
You know, that was there. So you can't really have a whole program unless you have at least, you know, maybe a minimum of one out.
So if you had like six to four vote on something?
Right.
Okay. This is why I was trying to be careful, depending entirely who the six are and who the four are.
Right.
You know, if the four happened to be Petaluma, Rona Park, Santa Rosa, and the county, that's a death knell.
Right.
Because that's two-thirds of the population.
Right. And is there a supermajority of this particular, like in other words, the larger cities have more of a weighted vote?
No, it is not.
No?
We're going to get into that on the next page.
Okay. Well, I knew that was somewhere coming up. Okay.
Councilmember Agamate?
Well, my question is, I know that, well, I've read the requirements for unanimous vote. A program would not necessarily require a unanimous vote? No.
No. The way it is right now, Madeline, is unanimous votes require just for expenditures over $50,000, approval of the annual budget, and any change to one of the major programs. That's the four core programs we talked about.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Is there any other questions before I go to public?
Could I make a comment, please?
Yes.
Maybe I can help a little bit here.
Welcome.
Because I think you're struggling with this one a little bit, I gather. What we've gotten from some of the other cities has been, yes, they'd like to have an opt-out provision, from that to ranging to, no, we don't think it's a good idea, but we recognize that others might have an interest. And those that have said, no, we don't want it to happen, what they've done is they've said, but we can see where it might be in... but we can see where it might be a necessity. And if that's the case, like Mr. Walters said, there needs to be provisions so that if somebody opts out, it doesn't damage the agency and the other members financially. And so some of the ideas that were put forth were some kind of a financial assessment to help finish off like a fiscal year, or some timing so that the agency's budget isn't affected. But.
And that would be as, as far as the fees and timeframes?
Yes, sir, yeah. So that might be, you know, if you're conflicted about this, that might be a happy compromise. Just as a suggestion.
And I, you know, just at, at first blush, a coup of larger cities could end something, you know? So I guess that's my concern. Because it's, you know, there are other areas that this seems to happen. I think I was at a committee, the Health Action Committee, and the complaint, as people were chiming in about small cities with respect to transportation, you know, we're not really looked upon in some of these situations for, for funding, for funding. And so this is, yeah, this, I, I agree with the financial, you know. If you're going to do that, you have to help the agency survive for one or two, that fiscal year, and possibly into the next. Because if you have to plan some type of a, you know, separation, it would have to be something that would benefit the agency as well, because it needs, you know, there are other members.
Thank you, Councilmember. If there's not any other questions, I'll go to public for any questions or comments. Seeing none, I will bring them back to council for further discussion. And if not, then I will call upon Councilmember Edwards.
So I'd be happy to have the individual members opt out of programs, but maybe take that current fiscal year and a, the following year to be the opt-out time. In other words, pay the fees that are appropriate to not, to keep the agency whole.
Okay.
So in other words, if we did it in, I don't know what the fiscal year is for, but.
So based on a one year?
Yeah, one year, well, the current year plus the following year.
Fine.
And if it's really worth opting out, then that's what we do.
Councilmember Agamonte?
I agree with that, thank you, Councilmember Edwards.
Councilmember Hunley?
And I also agree.
And I'll go ahead and concur, well, Vice Mayor Gallion?
It's okay, it's nice to be remembered.
Well, no.
I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, to me, I feel that some mechanism needs to be describing what are your core programs, and what would be your subsequent programs. So for me, what I would like to see is, I would like to see the provision where, and doesn't sound like I'm going to agree with everyone here, but that I would like to have a mechanism for members to opt out of some of those subliminary programs, all right? But not core programs. And I know that's a little odd, but I think that that might go ahead and take care of the additional financial stressors that might present itself in a, in a budget year.
And I'll go ahead and agree with the one and a half, so our straw would be four to one?
Yep.
But. Question five?
May I beg your indulgence on this one, please?
What's that?
May I beg your indulgence and explain a little something? Because this series of questions has gone a little haywire, and I think maybe if I could give you a quick.
Is that okay, city staff?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
That's whatever.
Yeah.
Because there's been some confusion. As it stands, as I said earlier, right now, there's a unanimous vote provision for three actions. Budget, capital expenditure over 50,000, and any change to a major program. And so the conversation that went place among our board and other, other members has been whether or not that unanimous vote is a good idea or not. And one of the ideas that came up is, instead of unanimous vote, having a supermajority of some sort. And the two ideas were either eight of 10, or seven of 10. Seven of 10 was a model used for the library JPA. The thinking there being, you know, if somebody, if some member really has heartache, they'll find somebody to stand with them if need be. The thing that gets confusing is, in addition to that, there's been some conversation about that list of three items that are subject to unanimous vote. So if, if, it turned out that the, the supermajority was what was, everybody agreed to. The, the next question, number six, is actually increasing the list of three to a list of six. So that's, that's what gets a little confusing. You know, the first, the number five has the three that currently exist. And then number six is actually about adding some items, which would be purchase of real property, incurring some debt greater than $250,000. The budget's in there, core programs is in there, changing the expenditure of funds from 50,000 to 250,000. And then the last item is allowing the board to approve amendments to the JPA agreement as opposed to having to come back to councils. Those were the, so that's the new six items that were thought of as being appropriate for conversation about a supermajority. Anything else would be a regular majority vote.
So question five and six are kind of combined, are actually kind of a combined question?
Yeah, they're related.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Agamonte?
And I think the staff report here on page, our 101, is, it explains it really well. This, what it is currently, the one, two, and three, just as Henry said. And then the second portion, starting with a related second proposal, gives you the six. Expanding, as, as Henry said, expanding the different things to vote on. And it's interesting, you know, that unanimous vote sounds pretty simple, but it's not, because the person that votes really needs as much information as possible, because they are, well, they're never caught unawares, I think, because I've sat with the city manager on some of these decisions. But it's almost like, you know, we have to understand and know what the four others would be thinking. So it's a very, I think it's a difficult vote. I've never had to do anything like that before. But, so that's, you know, I just wanted to say, I think this paragraph explains it very nicely.
Is that your report will come to, to council for discussion?
Question?
So Henry, what, what do you spend $50,000 on? What's a common purchase, or under $50,000 and over?
Our contracts.
Yeah.
Our contracts.
So your contracts for services?
Yes, sir.
And what, what does an average contract run?
Well, our Sonoma compost contract is three million. Two and a half to three million. Our houseless hazardous waste operator contract's about 1.6, 1.7 million dollars.
Okay. So one agency, or one contractor handles all the toxic cleanup, for example? For all the, all the communities?
Yes, yes.
Okay. What would be an example of one under 50,000?
We've had some engineering work done on a zero discharge, and with the compost site that was less. We've had some that were more. We have, yeah, we have Spanish language education, that's, that's.
Is that less? What's the $62,000 one?
Oh, that's C2, that's just the, the Willbray stuff. Yeah, so it's up, up and down.
And have you ever had anything that you were surprised that the, the voting members turned you down on?
Uh, one time, yes, sir.
Can you share that?
Yes, we, one of the things that, that we did in the last few years is, we systematically went through, and we started when we were about five years out from our end date, we rebid all our contracts. A lot of them had been in a, kind of kicked the can down the road mode, and we just felt it was time with the economy and the recession. And so we did a compost bid process, even though we'd had this company for 17, 18 years. And two days before the board meeting, we found out that the county was not going to vote on the contract because of stuff with our lease and license with them wasn't settled yet, even though we'd asked them to continue under the old arrangements for use of the property. And so that was kind of a surprise. The only other times we've had trouble have been kind of understandable. We had a, a board member take really sick and get rushed to the hospital just before he was due to come to our meeting. And of course, nobody was able to fill in for him. And we've had another calamity that happened to somebody. And, and that's just, that's life. You know, but, oh, yeah, one time, we had a surprise no vote that caused some ruckus.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I will go to public for questions or comments. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for more discussion. Vice Mayor Gallion?
I have no problem with, would you prefer supermajority approval of the items, A through F? And that it would be seven of 10?
Councilmember Agamonte?
I, I agree with that.
Councilmember Hunley?
Um, I would agree with seven or eight, or even nine.
And Councilmember Edwards?
I, I still like the idea of $50,000 and above needing the supermajority, rather than changing it to 250. Not that, not that there's any distrust, but I think it's, $250,000 is a lot of money.
Okay, is there, is there a council support for, for that?
So, could I ask a question?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Thank you for, for stating this. How is this amount, this, the $50,000, obviously there's an accounting that's going on. How is that amount? I think I understand what Gary's saying. So who checks to see if that, that bid or whatever that expense is correct? How does that go, Henry?
It's up to staff to get it right. And it, I mean, it's, the numbers are the numbers. If somebody quotes us $50,001, that's the way it has to be. Quite frankly, we, our mantra within our crowd is, we don't, we don't encourage any type of, any, I don't know what the right word is, any adjustments to make the prices come in under. We play it straight as can be, that's, that's our way.
So we're still doing the straw poll? Are you?
I'll go with everything that our Vice Mayor offered, and go for the 250.
Councilmember Hunley?
Same.
Then Edwards, you were, you were at 50,000?
Fifty, yeah.
Okay. And I'll go ahead and go with, with this, with Vice Mayor Gallion. So we'll go to question seven.
Okay. And so are we go on question seven, the supermajority, seven of 10 or eight of 10?
I said seven of 10.
I said seven of 10, and I'm comfortable with that.
Councilmember Edwards?
I would be eight of 10.
Oh, sorry. I'm, I'm fine with seven of 10.
Councilmember Hunley?
I think eight of 10.
And I would concur with, or eight of 10. So I think we have a quorum of Edwards, Cook, and Hunley for eight to 10.
Okay.
So question eight?
Question eight, would you prefer governance model, which allows for a mixture of jurisdictions, staff, and elected officials, or one which allows only elected officials? And there was no consensus reached by the board, there are many different options, so.
Okay.
If there is any comments or consensus.
So we'll bring it back to the council. Vice Mayor Gallion?
So when they're talking about a governance model, are they talking about one which is making policies? One, what, what is it that they mean by their governance model?
Well, right now, the way the JPA agreement sets, a jurisdiction can select who they wish to represent them on the board, our board. And it can be either an elected official or an employee of the jurisdiction. And there's been some sentiment among some of our board members that that ought to be all elected officials. And the background of that is that it seems over time, elected officials seem, seem a little more empowered to act on behalf of their, their jurisdiction without necessarily having to ask, mother, may I? Again and again, where a staff, because their employees want to go back to their councils and get direction. And it's caused some, some animosity among some of our board members at times. Nothing great, but it's happened. And I think on the elected officials' point of view, they felt like there's been plenty of time and plenty of notice, and we don't bring things out of the blue for our board to discuss. And so they've gotten a little frustrated. So there's been some sentiment among some of the elected officials that have served for a while, that they'd like to see all electeds, because they wouldn't, they, they don't want that conundrum of people wanting to go back to their member jurisdiction for help. Frankly, I just, my experience is that I just want a board member, and it doesn't matter to me whether they're elected or not, I think each jurisdiction has the right to choose who they want to. I think that's important. But I just like it to be board members that are engaged and willing to participate, because we've seen a bit of a gamut of people like that. And if we have engaged board members, it doesn't matter to me if their staff are elected.
Thank you.
Happy to have them involved.
No politicking.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Hunley?
So if we decided that it should be all elected, would this mean that our city manager couldn't be our alternate anymore? And in your experience, have you sat in on, on votes that, you know, you've, you felt you had to wait on? Or what was your experience?
Well, my experience has normally been that if I'm going to sit in on a vote, and if I were to be Councilmember Agamonte's attending a meeting on her behalf, then I, then I would make sure that I had discussed the item with her beforehand. So I had sufficient background where I felt that I could, that I could vote on the item. So, you know, I, I wouldn't have any apprehension to not vote on it. One thing that I, I just, as an aside, that I might mention in my discussions with Henry in this particular situation, and it has to do with alternates. And so if I can throw in just a piece of information, one thing that, that I understand the agency doesn't do, and maybe a suggestion, is that, that there is a designated alternate. Because I think that it's really important that if you are an alternate, that you be the designated alternate. It's my, it, it's my impression or understanding that, you know, absent a designated alternate, you could send anybody. So if, if you're not the designated alternate, it could be, okay, you know, just to go fill, fill the chair. In, in, by, by way of example, in REMF, REMF has, has a board member and a designated alternate. So that that designated alternate is always up to, is always up to speed. And so you know that if, you know, I, as the alter, as the REMF board member, if I'm not there, then my alternate is going to be there and is going to be up to speed. So I can't send anybody but my designated board member, so that that alternate, you know, is aware of what's on the agenda, and, you know, it has the authority to vote. If I were to send any other staff member, it, it would just be a waste of time for every other person that is sitting at the board, because they wouldn't be able to vote. So, you know, if, if I were to, you know, lend to my two cents, it would, it would be that, you know, if it's going to be an alternate, it should be a designated alternate, so that that alternate knows they have the responsibility to be up to speed if they're going to be representing their city.
And who's your designated alternate for REMF?
Kathy Lanning.
For public? I didn't want public to not know what we're talking about.
Yeah, as HR.
Councilmember Hunley, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Is there any other questions before I go to public? With that, I'll go ahead and public for any questions or comments. Seeing none, I will come back for further discussion. And if not, do a straw poll vote, starting with Councilmember Agamonte.
I just have something, I thank you so much for, for bringing that up about, because being on this, in this agency board, I've seen revolving people, and, you know, and I think it's not a healthy thing. And I think it actually affects Henry and his staff because of this revolving, you know, people who have, really don't know anything about it. So you have to re-explain, take back, just go backwards and go through this whole history. And if we look at number nine as well, possibly, because I, I, could I just ask a question of our Vice Mayor? For the SCTA Vice Mayor, do they have a TAC committee?
Yes, they do. And actually, in the vein of which you're speaking, if I could just interject, because I sit on water, I also sit on regional climate, and I sit on the county, that it is a designated alternate. And it is an elected official who is generally there. However, I have seen at one instance where another staff member, such as a director, you know, Public Works Director, or whatever, might come in and actually represent that type of issue in city manager. So I like. So I like the idea of a designated alternate. And I do like the idea of it being elected as well. And for the most part, when they deal with TAC, TAC is staff. It is not elected officials on that. Well, I just have to say, because they usually have a chair of the TAC, and then they have a chair of the actual board itself. So there are two separate chairs.
And the reason I ask that, my experience with, you know, the transportation committee from another county, the TAC would report to the whole board on an issue they were researching. So just as an informational only. But I, you know, for me, number eight, I really am adamant about just one designated person. I don't know how the other cities are going to vote, especially the ones that just have whoever can make it. You know, this isn't a fun committee, so I would imagine, "Don't make me go," type of a thing. But for number eight, I, Mr. Mayor, I actually would like a designated alternate.
And I guess I do have one question before we go any further. I know how the city of Sonoma, how we pick our person. Do all the other cities, do they do it the same way as Sonoma? As far as the members?
What do you mean? Have they picked their alternate?
Yeah, no, who would pick that person for that?
For the alternate?
Yes.
Usually, the city manager would pick that, or the council would, you know, request either the city manager or let the city manager pick the alternate.
But I mean, all the cities do the same as we do, pretty much?
Well, it's kind of all over the board, but, you know, I mean, that would be traditionally, depending on what the committee, depending on what the committee is, yeah.
So, Councilmember Agamonte, did you do your straw vote?
Yes, I would, I support a mixture, but with a designated alternate.
Councilmember Hunley?
I also support a mixture with a designated alternate.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
I have an elected, okay, and a designated alternate. And I have seen the problems with getting them to a major vote. You don't have those eight people that were requesting there. That whole meeting, nothing can happen. And that is a real danger for me. I think an elected official is going to show up.
So your straw vote is electeds only?
No, is elected and designated alternate.
Okay. Councilmember Edwards?
Mine is elected or staff, because staff gets paid to show up. And I think that's the right way to go.
Yeah, and I'll.
Designated staff.
And also, I agree with that, so.
A mix with the designated alternate.
My designated alternate could be a city manager. I'm not saying it has to be an elected.
No, 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 right.
But I'm saying, prime is elected, okay? And designated alternate can be similar as the structure now stands.
And just for clarification for the rest of you, you don't care if it's elected or staff? Or do you want the primary to be elected? I want to make sure I get this right.
I agree with Laurie.
So there are cities whose primary board member is a non-elected official?
Yes, I actually, to make it easy, I sit on two boards that are mentioned here, Sonoma Clean Power and the JPA for the library.
Yes.
And both of those, you can, it could be staff or elected. And to clarify.
Yeah, I want to make sure.
To clarify my vote, my vote would be that it could be either/or for both.
Okay.
For the alternate or the primary.
Okay, yours is either/or?
I'm elected.
Elected and?
Designated.
Either/or for designated alternate.
I agree with that.
And you're elected?
Elected with the designated either/or.
Okay.
I think I could go with either/or for both.
Okay.
And a designated.
And you're elected?
No, I'm either/or for both.
So we have two elected, two and two? Either/or, okay, so either/or, either, okay, okay. Got it, thank you. All right, we're on to question nine. And this is, would there be basically split where you would have a policymaking board and a technical advisory board? Right now, there is not a technical advisory committee, per se. Everything goes through the one board. So this would be adding a secondary tiered, you know, a tiered structure, a secondary.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
So the tiered advisory committee, or the technical advisory committee, it doesn't say what they would be comprised of. Do we have a stipulation?
The original idea was staff, ma'am.
Staff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's my question.
Councilmember Hunley?
So does that mean that if there's two boards, then every city would have two? One person at each, so they're doubling? And as far as the way that they meet? Like, do they meet together? Do they meet separate? Does one meet more than the other?
Henry?
The background of this question, the background of this question is that when we started about a year ago, and we approached our members about the elected versus staff question that we just, y'all just talked about, we asked some of the cities who were adamant about not sending elected officials why that was. And they said it was a time management issue. Everybody on their council had a day job or some commitment, and it just made it really tough, and they knew they could send a staff member. And so the idea of a tiered governance was something we came up with trying to address that. And what we were thinking of is you'd have a policy board of electeds, a technical advisory committee of staff. And in order to reduce the time commitment, what you'd do is you'd meet each one every other month. So, you know, January, March, May, July would be the board, and the other months would be the TAC. That was the idea. And it was presented not as a change to things as opposed to just an idea of something that may solve that conundrum of people having a time commitment issue.
Councilmember Agamonte?
If, through the mayor, may I ask a question? I feel that the TAC, and possibly, our vice mayor could correct me, seems to be an advisory to the other board, so.
It would be subservient, yes, ma'am.
Yes, and I would say that the TAC that meets, you know, with water, transportation, and climate, their board, there's a citizens advisory committee that also meets. I mean, they all have their own schedules. They meet on once-a-month basis based on issues. If there are no issues, they do not meet. But it is an understanding that staff would meet at a particular time, you know, on the technical advisory committee. And there is a chair that goes ahead and develops the agenda. And then those are things that if the policymaking board decided they wanted to study, they want to give it over to the TAC to go ahead and look at, and then report back, that's the type of information that they're looking for to do that. So you have someone in the ground running. They can spend the time that you need to, to develop research and other issues or fact-finding reports, things of that nature. And that works very well, you know, because it makes for a much shorter meeting, having information, not having to go back and forth on a basis between the two groups.
Agamonte?
May I ask, Mr. Walters, obviously, the city attorneys meet on this, for this same agency. I think you meet monthly, is that correct? Or as needed?
We meet as needed. And I don't think that we've been asked to serve in a capacity of assisting the agency that we've sort of decided we should meet for reasons independent of the agency itself, in that there were primarily proposals, the proposal to adopt this anti-plastic bag ordinance generated a lot of heat, so we all met to talk about that. And in addition, the proposal to extend the JPA, a brand-new joint powers agreement was developed by the former special counsel to the agency, and that was circulated amongst the attorneys, and we met to talk about that. But we don't serve in a capacity as advisory to the agency's board.
Do you guys have minutes for your meetings?
No.
Should you?
No.
And then, I'm sorry, I have one, I.
Councilmember.
I have another question. You know, while I think this committee is very difficult, and Steve Barbeau said it was a difficult committee, I don't think anything is beyond my understanding. And as I work with our city manager, you know, you remove that fuzzy look from my face. But possibly a TAC might be nice to just pull them up, you know, and as needed, maybe there's a something, I don't know. I mean, that's just sort of how I feel. I'm not definite on that, but I feel that.
Okay, I don't think, you have a question?
So as far as what the TAC would do, could you give an example of an issue that would be something that would be deferred to a TAC?
And you know, Henry, we have a microphone right there if you want to stay seated.
I'm sorry about my bad knees, I apologize for that.
Yeah, I'd rather you sit and relax, yeah.
All right.
Just as long as people at home can hear you. Can the cameraman, can you turn?
Here we go. Is this working now? No.
Hello?
Yes.
Old gray-haired guys, it takes its time. Well, for example, we've had, with the zero discharge plan, we've had some technical issues. For example, last year, we designed and built a pond to hold more water from the site. The engineering qualifications for the firm to do that would have been something a TAC would have looked at, and then made a recommendation to the board. Okay? Or if we had like, typically, when we have some new project, we'll review a bid scope or scope of services with the board. I mean, our direction is if it's a contract we're redoing and they've already looked at it, they don't need to. But if it's something new, they do. That's something a TAC could look at. So bid documents, references from somebody's perspective to work for us. Anything of technical.
Yeah, thank you. Is there any other questions? If not, I will go to public. Seeing no big rush, I will come back to the council. And if we, for further discussion, if we start a straw poll vote, it would be Councilmember Hunley.
So are we doing 9A and B together?
Yes.
So I think that having a tiered structure makes sense, and.
So would you say the policy would be a majority elected, combined?
Thanks.
Is this asking the same question that was answered in eight?
Well, that was before we said.
For A.
Yeah, is 9A the same question as eight?
Yeah, basically, 9A is the same question as eight. And now you're really just talking about, but if you now have a TAC, how would the TAC be composed? Would it be elected staff or a combination?
I think that since before, we, I did either/or for either, and then even if we divided, I think that we might decide to have elected in staff, but leave it up to whoever's picking the committees. So I say either/or for both.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
Well, it's clear that the majority would like the board itself to be staff or electeds. Okay, so I think that answers A. But the technical advisory committee, I feel, should be of staff. And that would be probably a designation within the city manager's realm as to who would be part of that TAC.
Councilmember Edwards?
I would go with the technical advisory committee being majority of staff, but I think it's important for elected officials to learn as much as possible for, maybe positive for whatever elected officials happen to be serving.
So you'd be either/or? Councilmember Agamonte?
And I agree with Vice Mayor Gallion. I think the TAC should be staff.
Well, I'm finally the swing vote. And I would actually go either/or. I think it would be the responsibility of those jurisdictions to make the decision based on what was right for them. Because I could see at some point, some little cities might not want to send staff, and that would be unfair to them. So I would go ahead and go either/or. So that would be three to two. Question 10? Yeah, you want to answer this? No?
Yeah. And this basically has to do with comments from the city attorney if they have specific issues on the language. And so Jeff, I'll ask if you have any comments on this, on either of these two questions?
I don't on the first. The focus so far has been more on the proposed Third Amendment. As I mentioned to you before, last year, the special counsel developed a new joint powers agreement. And the city attorneys and the county council met several times to talk about it. And I was charged with drafting a response to the JPA and special counsel into Henry, which I did with the concurrence of the other city attorneys. It's a very lengthy, single-spaced, 10-page letter, and it has a number of issues. And we've met recently with the new special counsel. And it's my impression that he has taken our concerns. And depending on the results of this survey, this matrix that all the councils are asked to fill out, a new document will be generated. And I'm sure that my colleagues and I will have another series of comments and issues to go over with that document, too.
So with that, do we have any council questions? Seeing none, I'm going to go out to public. Seeing none, I will come back for discussion and a straw poll vote. And it's Vice Mayor Gallion's turn.
I think it's everything Jeff just said. In other words, I think this is yet to be determined. And, you know, I certainly would want our city attorney involved in, you know, both 10 and 11 as they're presented.
Councilmember Edwards?
Handle it.
And I think the assumption was that the city attorneys would meet, and they would also, I think, meet with the county council. Ethan, who is the new person, is that right?
Ethan Walsh. He's the new counsel hired by the agency.
Oh, right, that's right, I'm sorry.
He does not represent the county.
So I agree with the rest of the council.
Councilmember Hunley?
And I agree with Vice Mayor.
And I also agree with this. And then just for public to understand, because I do believe that our TV coverage was off when we started this, the discussion and the straw poll vote on these 10 items will come to this. Can you explain exactly how the survey is going to go back? And what the process is from here on this?
We will report back through this matrix. We will report our, the responses of the council and the comments will go back to the agency board. And so the agency is collecting cumulatively all the responses from all the cities that are going basically through this same process. And then it will be discussed at the agency board level.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, in addition, I think the dates for the next agency meeting have been extended, possibly to gather all this material, because different councils are meeting at different times. So I think we'll really have the numbers by then.
Great. With that, I've had a request to take a five-minute break.
Thank you, everybody.
I'm going to go ahead and open the meeting. We are on regular calendar 7B. Discussion, consideration, and possible action of a resolution establishing procedures pertaining to the appointments to city boards and commissions, city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Cook, members of the city council. During the past several months, there's been multiple appointments come forward for various boards and commissions. And due to this unprecedented high volume of activity, a review of the existing process was directed by the city council. And by way of background, the current process for appointment of citizens to city boards and commissions has been in place since 2002. And since that time, going back according to city agenda records, the process has been reviewed by various city councils in 2005, 2009, process has been reviewed by various city councils in 2005, 2009, and 2013, with no changes enacted. The most recent review in June of 2013 included a draft of a resolution prepared by the city attorney, which encompassed the direction of the council's discussion in late 2012. The major points of that resolution, which was included in your agenda packet, which was under consideration at that time, included, number one, retaining the existing concept that the appointment of alternates to fill a vacancy is not automatic, but discretionary with the mayor, subject to ratification by the council. Number two, continuing the current policy of authorizing the mayor to nominate candidates for vacant, open positions, subject to the ratification by council. Number three, making the appointment process somewhat more transparent, at least to the council, by making minor changes to the existing practice, which included, A, the city clerk is required to give the mayor and council members notice of the expiration of a commissioner's term of office, and B, a mayor's determination that he or she will not consider reappointing an incumbent must be noticed to the other council members. It retains the existing practice of permitting the mayor to unilaterally determine that an incumbent will not be reappointed, and unilaterally determine that the existing applications on fire, on file, excuse me, are sufficient or not to choose from, and that advertising the open vacancy is unnecessary or necessary. Number four, also offered two alternatives to the interview process. Alternative one retains the existing practice of authorizing the mayor to appoint one other council member to join the mayor in interviewing the candidates. The resolution changes the existing practice, not policy, by mandating that the interviews be conducted by two council members in attendance, or alternate number two does away with the subcommittee concept entirely, and gives the full council the opportunity and right to interview all candidates during the public portion of an agendized council meeting. Ultimately, after the council discussion and vetting, the resolution was not adopted, and the current process remained unchanged. The second related issue of several council discussions related to the appointment of alternates. In separate previous discussions, the council reviewed issues on whether the appointment of a commission alternate should be automatic instead of being at the discretion of the mayor. The automatic appointment provision would require further review due to the potential conflict of filling a city commissioner's seat with a city resident, as one seat on the commission is reserved for an out-of-city resident, and should that issue come forward, making the appointment of an alternate automatic would require an amendment to the municipal code. For further clarification, as part of the review, staff conducted a survey of processes used by other cities in Sonoma County, which I summarized and is included on the matrix provided in your agenda report. Thought this may aid you in your discussion. The town of Windsor wasn't included on that report, as I didn't receive a response until late Friday, and Windsor updated me on Friday and said, and I quote, "The council's current practice is each council member appoints a commissioner for a term coinciding with that of the council member making the appointment." We have five council members, and there are five planning commission seats. And lastly, for full disclosure purposes, I wanted to publicly state that all applications for board and commissioners are given to all council members by the city clerk, so each council member, whether they are on the interview committee or not, are privy to the applicant's information prior to the consideration for appointment or ratification. So, then it concludes my staff report at this time, it's for council discussion and consideration, whether they want to move forward with changes to the current process at this time.
Okay, is there any council questions? Councilmember Hunley?
Do we know what the system was before 2002?
No, we don't have, I mean, 2002 is the last documentation that we have.
If I could add to that, I know at one time, the council did interviews at a council meeting, but I don't know when they exactly, they went off of that procedure.
Should we call Ken Brown? Is there any other questions?
I just have a comment. Having served on another council, I know one of the cities, I think it was stated that each council member has their own appointment, and unless the person wants to resign from that appointment, the commission appointment, if a person is in office 12 years, that's how long the appointee will be on that commission, so I just wanted to mention that.
Councilmember Edwards?
But we have term limits for commissioners, which I don't want to see changed, I think it's important to turn people over on the commissions, and to, just to maybe add further into the discussion, I'd like to see, I'd just like to see it be a more open process, and I don't, I wouldn't like to see it be in open forum at a council, interviews at a city council meeting, I don't think that would make sense, but I do think that there needs to be some alternative to one person, whether it's me or anyone else, appointing a commissioner, and I like the idea of an alternate, just to fill the pipeline, to have the alternate become automatic, and that the next position, whether it be in-town or out-of-town, I don't know if it says that, if that out-of-town person can be the alternate as well, because we may not have a qualified, as a highly qualified person.
Code currently states that all alternates have to be city residents, and the thinking behind that was, they could fill either position, whether it was for in or out, but if they weren't a resident, they couldn't fill a position that was, that was for, that had to be a city resident.
But the, I'm sorry, the, so the outside of the city cannot be the alternate?
That's correct.
All right, I could live with that, but what I would like to see is the vetting process, that we go a little deeper into it because of the issues that we have coming towards us, I just, as we stated in our discussions in the past meetings, I think it needs to be a more serious effort.
Is there any other council questions? I will take it out to public.
Good evening, council, Bob Felder, Fifth Street East, Sonoma. I have some opinions about this, having gone through the process, I don't think there's anything wrong with, basically wrong with the current way it is done, where there's a mayor plus one council member that goes through the selection process, and then eventually the mayor does select and gets ratification from the council. I would question whether you can add another council member to that selection process, because I think you're in violation of Brown Act unless it's a public meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong. So, that, given that, I, there isn't much else you can do except bring it into a public meeting and either ratify or not ratify the appointment, go back to the showers if it doesn't get ratified. I do have also some strong feelings about the position of alternate, even if it is not an automatic process, and I could, I can see pros and cons there, but I think you have to give a lot of weight to the person who is sitting in an alternate position, because he effectively has been vetted to sit on the commission, at least in that capacity, and if he weren't a qualified candidate, he shouldn't be there as an alternate, because he can participate when a council, when a commission member is absent, so I would like to have certainly more consideration given to the alternate being moved up into a standard commission position. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back for discussion and action, Councilmember Hunley?
First, I wanted to explain a little bit why I thought before that we should have this discussion, which I'm glad we are. There were two issues that I had, sort of with the recent discussions that we had about appointments. One of them that I wanted to clarify was I wanted to have a conversation about why, why the system is the way it is. The comment had been made during a previous discussion that nominating commissioners was a perk that belongs to the mayor, but first, I wanted to distinguish, in cities that have elected mayors, and it is, it's a responsibility that's assigned to those elected mayors, it's a different situation when the public is picking a mayor to be a policy head, whereas in a city like ours, where we have equal city council members, we're all elected equal, it's just that we, you know, take turns serving as mayor, because in some ways, it's more efficient to have one person, you know, being the face of the city, and having, you know, certain responsibilities where it's better to have one person. So, even though I wasn't here in 2002, I suspect that, you know, instead of having everyone sit through every interview, they decided that it was more efficient to have one person do it, and then if you're going to have one person, you might as well have the one, you know, the mayor that you've already picked for other purposes, do that. And the second thing that is, has disappointed me a little bit, is particularly with the planning commission, and the fact that it has been so long since there has been a female commissioner on there, and I think that, and when I moved here, and I started looking at the commission, and I started asking like, well, why aren't there any women? And the answer that I was given was, well, it's because there's no qualified female applicants, but as we have seen in the last couple interview cycles, it's not true. So, I think that the process as a whole, and the process over, you know, at least the past decade, I don't think it works, because I don't think that an effective process would still have a commission that's composed entirely of men, so I would like to do something to change it, because I'm not going to keep putting my faith in this system, hoping that maybe one day it's going to work, and we're going to have, finally have a woman up there. So, I think that there are ways that we can take what we've started, but make it a lot more transparent, and then also instill a little more confidence in the process, because I think one of the problems is, when it appears like the process isn't working, you know, the people that applied, you know, in the past couple times, you know, if you get frustrated seeing the way that it goes down, and you don't have faith that the system's going to work out fairly, then eventually people just stop applying, and your pool of candidates, you know, you're not going to get the qualified people that you are, just because they don't want to waste their time if they don't think the system's working. So, I have a proposed system, and it's kind of like the one we have. First, looking at the things that the other cities have done, you know, I don't, I don't think that it needs to come back to the full council to do all the interviews, I don't think that'd be very efficient. I don't particularly like the idea of each of us having appointed commissioner for our duration, because it seems like that would lack continuity, and also, that would have even less transparency about, you know, why the candidates were picked, and the qualifications they might have. So, instead, what I propose is keeping a two-person subcommittee, made up of the mayor and one other council member, and the council member, it could be chosen two different ways, the completely transparent way, it would be a rotating basis, you know, alphabetical order, based on rotating through all of the non-mayor council members, or, if you prefer, we could leave it to the discretion of the mayor, but the difference would be that this subcommittee, instead of it being like the decision-maker and sort of an aide, it would be two equal decision-makers together, charged with picking a nominee, and their duty would be to do the interviews, pick a nomination, and if they agree, which they usually do, then they present their nomination to the council, and we vote, just like we have, but if there is an instance where, for whatever reason, they do not agree, this would give them the power, since they are both equal decision-makers, to bring each of their nominations, explain it to the council, you know, I want this one person for this reason, I want this person for this reason, if notice was given ahead of time, you know, the rest of the city, the rest of the council members could, you know, independently talk to the people, decide who they want, and then we would have a, you know, a decision that way. And this way, that there's always, you know, it's always a two-person decision, which I think would be a lot more transparent. And the, let's see. And on a related note, I wanted to mention thoughts about the planning commission, because that's the one we've talked about lately. As I've noted before, the CSEC has a list of suggested qualifications, and the Design Review Historic Preservation Commission has a list of qualifications that are retired, required, since we're certified local government, so, since the planning commission makes such significant decisions that are, you know, permanent, this is, things are developed, I think at the very least, it would be nice to see the planning commission themselves get the process started of, you know, since they've been on it, putting together qualifications that they, of people that they would want to work with, because not only is putting qualified people on there important for, you know, decisions they're make, you know, it's out of also respect to the people that are already on there, to give them people that they can benefit from having. So, a couple more comments, but I think I've talked enough.
Councilmember Edwards?
So, if I could interject maybe a thought with that, is that if we have, say, the mayor and another council member don't agree, that we, and Jeff, maybe you can help me with this, so if we don't agree, then we say, well, all right, well, here's our top three candidates, and then we pass that off to two other council members to do, to re-interview. Is that legal? And then have the choice, go out of the hands of two people that disagree, and see where it floats down the road? In other words, if they can come up with a solution-
What if they can't agree on three?
No, but the thing is, is that there's, I mean, in the interview process, I mean, we discussed that there were, you know, these X, Y, Z candidates, but, you know, to me, you know, the choice was, you know, pretty much already set before we completed, and we had that disagreement, so what it says in the document is that we, you agree on a candidate, and you bring them forward, and that didn't happen. So, what I'm saying is, if there is not, you know, a consensus of the two, no matter who it is, is that you bring those candidates to two other people on the council, without going to a public forum.
So-
I'm just curious if that's legal, Jeff?
I have two questions, it probably is, but then what do you do? With the two additional council members, they interview, let's assume it's, there's three?
Well, let's say you pick three, and then they interview, and they make their pick.
So, it's the-
And they bring, then they make a recommendation back to the council.
So, the B team makes a recommendation?
Right, but the, whether it's A or B, the first group that interviews has, you know, we pick the top three, and maybe that should be the way, just the way that it is, you pick the top three, and then you have it re-interviewed by two additional council members, then you get a better average of people.
And let's assume those two come up with the same top three, they can't agree either.
Well, but their assignment is that they have three that are qualified, and you take any potential politics out of it, and then you have the opportunity for them to select who they feel is the best qualified for that job.
But you always sort of have to hypothesize that they can't come to an agreement, so you have two groups of council members that don't agree. It seems to me that-
Well, it sounds like that would be the process that we have, because the process has to be ratified by three council members, so if the mayor nominates one, like Coleman, and it came to the council, and there was three, which there wasn't three, because one member was gone that day, that kind of started this issue, if that did not get ratified, then it would go back, you know, through the process, so I think, and I'll let the other ones speak, but I was just trying to answer that question, it's, that's kind of the way, that's the way it is.
Well, maybe if I can add to that, is though, but if, if two people can't agree on it, then you take it out of our hands, and you just move it on, and have all the candidates re-interviewed by the second, too.
And you'll never get picked by the mayor again, probably, to-
But the thing is, so, I mean, we keep talking about this thing about the mayor, but, you know, none of us are elected to be the mayor, we're all 20% of the community, period, and the fact, there's no special powers or special- And the fact, there's no special powers or special mojo because you're the merits. Mainly ceremonial and it's like, Councilmember Hunley said that it's a point person for the community at that, for that particular year. And that's it. I mean, it's not a, it's not a special power.
Do we have any other council questions? Councilmember Hunley?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Yeah, when I was thinking about sort of my new system, the reason I had picked that, well, one, I thought it was important that the two people doing the interviews had equal standing because it spread out the responsibility. But then, you know, even if they can't agree on anything at all, they're each going to have their one pick. And if it's that sort of conflicted, then it would be nice to then get the, the full council's opinion. And I think that that would make a, you know, more, much more confident decision in that. And then I also wanted to note that even though this seems like this is just about our last planning commission decision, I think that I'm just looking at the system as a whole and particularly in light of the comments I made about the, just the makeup of the planning commission and that's like 10 years in the making. So this is sort of, you know, a systemic thing and it's not about one particular decision.
And you realize we've had some female mayors in that time.
Well, I'm not saying anything about the mayors. I mean, female, it doesn't take a woman to pick another woman to be on there. I mean, they're, they're going for what's more qualified.
No, I just want to make that comment because it's not like we have a male-dominated mayorship here for the last 10 years. So I just wanted to clarify that. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. There are some things that I agree with. I would, with respect to the word perk, I guess it was a word that was possibly chosen not in the best light. Maybe word, the word prerogative might have been better. I, I don't know, but, and I'm glad that Councilmember Hunley mentioned the no public interviews because, you know, I've seen people, some are not as talented in the public as others and they're, they would be wonderful commissioners in any of the commissions. And so I would hate someone to lose that chance because they couldn't perform in public. And I don't agree with everybody being interviewed, you know, I agree with you, not everyone being interviewed at the same time because that would take, that would take possibly a special, you know, meeting. Having, having been a mayor, mayor in the past, I have to disagree with you, Councilmember Edwards, because I'll tell you why. It's not just ceremonial. I agree with you regardless of our financial ability, our education, we all have one vote. But when you sit in the mayor's seat, you're sitting there possibly setting an agenda and directing staff to go in a certain direction because certain things can't be determined by the whole council and a mayor, whomever that may be, it'll be one of us throughout the years. But I think there is a great difference just because of that. And, and I think that there are more responsibilities having been in that seat. There's a big difference between sitting on this council and being the mayor and everybody staring at you when you have to control a meeting. That's a huge responsibility. And then I guess in a way I take umbrage with the issue of female because I was the other person making that decision for the commissioner. And so my opinion really mattered. I'm a female and I, I agreed with Mayor Cook with respect to his choices on the commission. So the other thing, I think, one of the things is I cannot have the logic of anybody else here. And possibly the logic of my, my logic will not agree with Vice Mayor Gallion's logic for different reasons. You know, you may choose somebody that, you know, I wonder and then I think, well, okay, it makes sense because it balances it in certain ways. I just don't want, for me personally, you know, I just don't want this to become, we need more females because they're females. And so, you know, I, I understand why because I think it makes sense in some ways, but that's just how I, this is my opinion.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
First of all, I would like to have just a recommendation for me would be that if we're choosing any commissioners in the future, that it would be a five-seeded council at that time before the decision would come forward. That, that was pretty evident to, to me during those, those meetings. And I just feel that, you know, had we had the full council before us, we might've had a, a different outcome, you know, at that particular time, even with all the discussion that came forward. I believe in the transparency process. I always want to be transparent. I always want that to be part of it. We are bound however by, and Jeff, if you would just correct me in my process, if you interviewed 17 people and it was you and someone else, you have in effect brown acted with each other in that particular interview process. You have shared the thoughts between two people and you have given your best decision as to what the outcome was going to be. I don't think that I would be looking to extend that to another person or another two people because then they would also be brown acted in whatever their decision is. And that leaves one person out in that decision, okay? So to me, the fact is, is that there has been extensive information that has gone forward among four people, but yet this one person is out in the, in the open to try to make that decision or it could be the swing vote on what might come forward. I don't feel that that process is right, just, just because of my personal opinion. Now, it could be legal, it could be anything else, and it could be an alternative that's chosen in the future. I definitely don't agree in personal appointments of planning commissioners. We have gotten the mix that we have gotten based on the fact that we have people who apply and who are willing to do the job. And I feel it has worked out very well to this point. To speak to the female components of the planning commission or female components of any commission, I've interviewed many in my years that I've been here, and we do not have an exorbitant amount of female applicants come to be part of commissions. And it would be wonderful, especially since we have three women on this council, that we will inspire others to step forward. And I look for that future. But again, I feel it's just as discriminating to go ahead and have a panel of applicants knowing that you want a female planning commissioner and there are other male applicants that may fill the job better. So I think we have to be very careful with what we actually decide we're going to do as far as transparency. I think it's no secret that we would love to have a female planning commissioner. I think in the end, you know, what I'm looking at is that I'm looking at the alternate, you know, the alternates and the process for the alternates themselves. I do feel that they should be considered. They have been vetted as an alternate, they have been passed and ratified by the council as an alternate. They are actually not someone that I feel has to go back into a pool and being determined again whether they are worthy or not. I, I absolutely don't agree with that at all. So for me, what, what is their position? Does the mayor go ahead and ask that alternate? Do you want to go up on the commission itself? I mean, is that process even considered at all? You know, do they automatically say, well, gee, I don't feel ready, maybe I want to sit in this seat for a little while and go ahead and interview other commissioners? I think there could be more conversation around that as well. All right? In the process of the alternate, I feel unless there is a strong objection, that that alternate should move forward. And that is something that the mayor can decide. I feel that the mayor, if they are not going to decide it, should announce that to the council and say, I'm going to go ahead and pursue and have other interviews. Now, questions concerning all of that? We're dealing with this in hindsight. We've placed how many planning commissioners in a short period of time? You know, maybe there's a waiting period after interviews that are done when you have people. If they vacated, is it so urgent that we need to get someone in there as soon as possible? Ray, my husband reminded me that he was the first alternate when he came on the planning commission. And he said, the only reason that they did that was to provide an alternate, and I don't know when Ray started to serve, but it was close to the 2000 mark, was that because they didn't have enough people on the commission that weren't in conflict for what was being done. So I think we need to also be thinking about what our prerequisites are and what we're making as requirements for the planning commission too. Because there is a lot of industry that's going on here in, in town and, you know, we may need that particular alternate. I did not know, Gay, and thank you for saying it, that the person who was the alter, alternate could actually go into the non-city position. Our, our city alternate cannot go into a non-city. Okay, okay, I, then I misunderstood you. I thought that the alternate could go and take the position of the, of the non-city position on the planning commission. So maybe you could clarify that for me?
There's nothing in the code that says that. But the code does provide, for instance, in the planning commission, that there is a position that may be filled by a non-city resident. Doesn't say it has to be.
Okay. All right. So I don't know if this gives any, any further clarification for, you know, where I'm going, but these are questions that I basically, you know, have. And I have it about the alternate and the term of who's selecting at the time the applicant comes forward.
Well, we'll all speak before we, we go back, back around through this. Yes, I, I nominated five people since I've been the mayor for the planning commission with one being reappointment. And I'm here to say that probably the hardest thing to do as the mayor is to go through the nomination process. Because what I would like to see, I like to see individuals step up and go into commissions. Since I've been on the council now in my third year, I have always agreed that the alternate should move up. But I think it still should be a, a direction from a nomination from the mayor, which is ratified by the city council. And that's what, I want to make sure that my colleagues understand what ratification means because ratification means a quorum of the city council members, which would be three. The only reason I think we're here is because we had a council meeting with four. And I do believe, as probably most of my colleagues up here believe, that we should never, ever have something on the agenda. It should be automatically removed. It should be a ratification with five members here. What I did was I nominated one planning commissioner and one alternate, knowing that within one month, there was one, that was one planning commissioner that was going off. So I feel like I'm falsely accused of not moving an alternate into that position because if you hear me speak and when I've been on the council, I have always ratified for the alternate to move into that position. So I just want to make sure that that's clear because this was, this was one of those years that was probably the hardest for the mayor. I'm not looking for a pity party here, but I'll tell you, it is not fun to sit up here and make nominations for five planning commissioners within your first four months and then have the issues. The mistake that was made was that I felt that I did not want to re-interview the candidates. I didn't want to put them through the pain of this. So I picked Councilmember Edwards on the first one out of respect for his position being on the planning commission. I spoke with city staff and I really felt that the process of sending everybody back through would be better so there was not any Brown Act violations to have Councilmember Edwards come back through the interview process. So I do want my colleagues on the council to know that is why I did not surpass any other council members. It just made sense because we were interviewing up to 23 individuals. And I know that there was comments made that the process, the interview process was too short. Well, I, I think I've had a couple of council members in interview processes since then to see that five or 10 minutes can be enough of a time to go through the whole interview process. So what I'm saying is I don't think the system is broke. I sat out in the, in the nosebleed seats out here and I had the old council, probably two councils before this council, discuss this because they had an issue. And when it all was said and done, they didn't make any changes because it's always these one little things that seem to, to spark it. But when you really look at it and how to be fair, especially to our potential commissioners, it's a simple way. The mayor appoints one of the colleagues on the council, they do the interview process, all the other council members have in their packet the, the, every one of the candidates. The mayor nominates. I think somebody has to, somebody has to place a name to it. When it comes up for ratification, if there's less than a quorum of three, then the process continues. Or the mayor reluctant, can just say that he's not going to nominate anyone else and till his, his or her term expires, it's up to the, the next mayor to make that nomination depending on, you know, the amount and what it is. So I would say that my vote tonight, I would, I would say that don't broke, don't, don't fix what's, what's broken, what's not broken. Councilmember Edwards?
So I'll, I'll go back to the, one of the comments brought up by Councilmember Hunley is that we, if you go back and look at the applications, actually, we had, which turned out to be my final pick because I, we agreed on the first two picks in our interview process. And I think we did just fine. But then on the second round, my pick was, happened to be a woman and happened to be somebody who had attended 14, 12 or 14 planning commission meetings, had background in, that, that was very qualified towards, with her work with senior folks in housing and senior issues, going back to our elder abuse situation here earlier. And she was my pick based on experience and interest in also serving on other commissions. And, and when we, you know, the comments that were brought up about being, you know, diversity and, and I think you were speaking mostly in diversity of not just contractors and builders and developers and so on. But we've had a pretty good diverse group in planning commission. Bob Felder's is, you know, he's not one of those guys. I was, I'm a cheese salesman still. And we had a pretty good group. We had a lot of people had experience with building and some people are architects, developers in other towns, some people have huge shopping centers in other places. I don't look at the diversity. Diversity to me is being reflective of the community. And I think this city council, sitting here with three women and two men, is very reflective of, of our community. And I think it should be that way. I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily believe in it, you know, it just, it has to be a woman. But in my assessment and opinion, I look at how I work in city council and how I work with government. It's very difficult for me, being an entrepreneur, and the slowness of it sometimes. But if this was a business, you know, I would be, if I was the CEO of the company or, or an investor in the company, which I am, everybody in the community is an investor in our business, which is the city of Sonoma, we, we didn't do the best job that I think we could have done in this particular situation.
Councilmember Hunley?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that I think that the, that the system is, I mean, I'm not saying that it's been disastrous, but I think that it could be better. And I think that adding a check to, right now, what is one person's decision, it's not a slight to anybody, but it just, it gives more confidence in the system. I mean, it's, it's still, with the suggestion that I made, it's still, you know, the, you know, the mayor's, you know, privileged to be a part of every commission interview that we have, but, you know, to everyone, you know, else involved, it's in the public that's watching it, the, the people who are trying to ratify the votes, you know, having a second opinion to, you know, bounce these things off of, I think it just makes it a stronger choice. And I maintain that each commissioner, they are, you know, they're being chosen through a delegated power that belongs to the full council. So I think that it's something that the, you know, full council should have faith in. So this is why I believe that if for whatever reason, it's a close call and the two people can't agree, that it is, it'd be good for the full council to have the discussion. And then I think a lot of, you know, good points might come out about, you know, what, what we really are looking for in, in a commissioner. we really are looking for in commissioners. And, right now, it's just, it's just so, you know, nebulous. It just depends on, you know, who's the mayor that year. Nobody really knows, like, what they could be looking for. So I just, I think that, I think the system could be stronger with a very small change that would not leave the mayor out of the decision-making process, but would add a check that would, I think, make the public have more confidence in the system.
Well, I think you made, you made two, you've made two comments, I just want to make, make sure I'm clear on. One, you said that the mayor makes the decision, which he does, he or she does not. He or she, the mayor, makes the nomination. The decision is the ratification of the council. And number two, when you said that the planning commission has one of the most important roles in the city, because they're making the final decision, they can all be appealed back to the city council. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of those two things.
Okay. I said that the decisions that the planning commission makes are, in many cases, permanent, because they're making developments. I'm not saying that there's no appeal process, but, they have a print on the city that is indelible. So it's very important that, you know, that, you know, they're chosen wisely, that they, you know, that we, the elected officials, you know, are picking people that we think are going to be good for the future. And, what was your first comment?
About the decision. It's a nomination.
Yes, but because nobody else can even nominate someone, the only person that we get to talk about is the nominated person. Like, we can either up or down vote the nomination, which I think, because of that system, it's, people are unlikely to disagree with it, because it's either you're, you're moving forward with the candidate, or you're just like saying, "No." But you can't, excuse me, but you can't have an alternate to bounce it off again. So, by having even a second name up there, you can compare, rather than just, "Yes," or, "Stop." Okay, do it all over again. "Yes," or "Stop." The process right now, it pushes everyone to just agree with a nomination, because it's so, you know, it interferes so much to say "No," and then you just kind of start over and do it all over again.
Then if we were going to make a change, then maybe where the point that we should make the change, the change would be, is if the current process doesn't work to that point, where the nomination does not get a quorum, and Jeff, you can answer that, what, I mean, what the process is right now. If there's a nomination from the mayor, it came to a full council, you'd want to make sure you had all five members here. And if there wasn't a quorum, then, there could be a process other than what we have now set forth.
So, you're asking if, under the circumstances where a nomination is made, it does not garner a majority vote to ratify it? And, the mayor then puts forth another name within a prescribed period of time, and that also does not garner a majority? This happens a number of times, or?
Well, if we, I mean, if we want to, if we want to change the process, and that's what we're looking at, to try to make this more streamlined, or where, where members of the council feel that they have their 20% vote, if it didn't, if the mayor nominates, like, right now, how it's set up, if the mayor nominates, it goes for ratification, let's say it doesn't go to ratification. At that point, couldn't we change it to where the process, I mean, we could, council member Edwards?
Well, I think what you're saying is that there was no point in actually me being in those interviews. Because if it's, the mayor's going to, going to make the nomination, then there's no point in having two cents from somebody else, is what I think you're saying.
No, I'm talking about the way the process is.
Well, but the process is, is that it's supposed to be two people, doesn't matter who they are, that agree on a choice, and they bring that forward to the rest of the council. And that didn't happen in this case. It happened on the first two, but it didn't happen on the last one. That's all. Pretty simple.
May I make a comment? Rather than us sitting here forever, I think we need to make a decision on which way we're going, because it doesn't seem as if anyone's going to, it's not going to be resolved. I have my own opinion, so, what is before us is what? The discussion and possible action of a resolution? The only thing, I guess I've heard a lot of things, but one of them was with respect to the alternate. Am I asking that there was a request for more of a clarification for alternate? That if a person is an alternate, they should automatically possibly? I mean, I don't?
That was one, that was one of the discussion topics that we could take on. So, we're right at the point where somebody can make a motion to try to, to change the way the process is. That motion could be to keep the process the way it is.
Okay.
So, Carol, is it possible that we can come back to you and maybe defer this to another date, to where, come back to us with some suggestions? So we can get this in writing, so we can have a policy that can move forward, not just for this council, but for future councils?
So, you would like me to bring back some potential options that you could vet, rather than just leaving it for open?
Yeah, because we all have our opinions, and what happens is, the, there's not going to be, probably be a consensus here tonight. And, if you take the politics out of it?
Okay.
That's what I would like to see, is you take, take all the politics out of it, and have a policy and a procedure that?
Some, some options that you could, that you could vet?
Yes.
I could certainly do that. If that?
The attorney has a question?
But I don't agree with that.
I seriously doubt the positions are going to change.
Yeah.
I'm sensing some very strongly held positions, and I think, to benefit staff, I would recommend you try some motions.
Yeah.
If you want some, if you want, if you want us to come back with some specific language that has, puts some flesh to the bones, I think it'd be helpful to the staff to get some bones.
Council member Agamati?
Who can make some motions that garners three votes? And, it could be the, just most general concept?
I think we have somebody trying.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion, that we leave it in the way that it, this procedure is, continues to be the procedure that we've, we've worked with. However, in addition, we should take a look at possibly, the alternate should automatically be appointed to a commission. So I don't know if that sounds nice, I don't know if you can make anything out of it. But, that's what my motion is.
Okay. So I understand your motion, that the process remains as is, but with respect to alternates, if the alternate is willing to serve as the permanent position has become vacant, then that alternate would be automatically placed in that vacant position?
And that's what I offer.
But with ratification of the city council?
It's the same process that we have now.
So that alternate would, that name would automatically come to the council for ratification?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Vice Mayor Gallion?
If, I could just have a moment here. If, if we have ratified that alternate, with the possible potential that they would sit on the commission in the original ratification, why would we be bringing that back again for us to do it again? I'm just kind of throwing that out. To me, if they're in the position of alternate, they would advance when there is an opening on the commission itself. The only question would be, is if they choose not to do that, and wish to remain an alternate.
So, may I ask, is that how it stands now?
No.
So that would be?
It's not automatic. It's not automatic.
Were you, did you know, I mean, are you saying you do know that, or do not know that?
No, I am saying that, that I would like it to be automatic, because number one, we have already ratified that candidate as an alternate, meaning that the potential is that they would serve as a commissioner.
So then I'll make an amendment to the, to the motion. The motion would be that we accept, that we accept the process as it currently exists, where the, well, currently exists, and an alternate will be accepted on a commission, because they've already been vetted. Is that what you're saying?
Move up.
Just automatically appointed. I'm sure you can make it sound better.
So if they, if they, if they're willing to serve as a permanent member of that particular board or committee, they would then be deemed automatically appointed to fill that position?
Right.
Right, and that question would be asked by the mayor?
Or, or any, any, the city manager or the mayor?
Yes. I mean, the only, the only thing I want to make a comment on that is, I want to get resolved tonight, so I think we should talk about it. But when you are serving as an alternate, it is true that that does not count against your term limit time, correct?
That's correct.
So that's why I would, I would like to see the ratification of the council, because if you're on the planning commissioner as an alternate for two years, then when you come back on, you could possibly be on the, on the planning commissioner for, for 10 years.
No.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. Council member Edwards?
So, maybe, Madeline, you might be open to this. So, being, I think I'm the only person here who's served on the planning commission, and I fought for my position on the planning commission. I had to run for city council, so I could get on the planning commission, because I wasn't appointed by the mayor when asked. And, you know, maybe the thought of, that whoever the mayor is, and the alternative, the, the other council member, but there has to be consensus between those two. Because to me, it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense for me, if I were the mayor, and I wanted to appoint somebody, and Rachel was completely against it, I would, you know, I don't think I should bring that forward. That's just how I, that's how I operate.
But there's still a ratification of three members.
But I understand that. But the thing is, is that if, if two of us can't agree, when you do the math, it's, it doesn't?
But what if you're the lone vote? What if, what was, the council had four would vote for that person, and you would vote against that person?
No, I'm talking about if I were the person nominating that person. What I'm asking for is that, wouldn't it make sense to have a consensus between the two interviewers on?
And I, and?
On the group.
And I would disagree with that, just based on the?
And I will ask for the call for the question.
It needs to be seconded.
I will second you.
Okay, I call for the question.
No, once the call for question is done?
Okay, my hand's been raised for like, the past five minutes.
So, you second? So?
I second you, yes.
Okay. So, city clerk, we're going to go ahead and do a vote, and do the council members know what the motion is?
The motion was to keep the process that we have in place now, with a change that would make the alternate automatically, or the name, if the alternate is willing to serve, the name would automatically come to the council for ratification.
Okay, we can call for a roll call vote?
Council member Hunley?
No.
Council member Agamati?
Aye.
Council member Edwards?
No.
Council member Gallion?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye.
We will come back with an ordinance that provides for that.
Thank you. And for public, we just passed the ordinance, our, we passed a agenda item to keep things the way they are, except for having the appointment go automatic for the alternate. Thank you. With that, council member reports and comments. Council member Agamati?
I'm sorry, I went to the celebration of Buena Vista Winery. I think our mayor was there, of course, and, and, council member Edwards. I encourage everyone to take, to go to this winery, the museum. I wish I could say it the way the count said, "Museum," or something, it sounded wonderful. I really suggest people do that. I wanted to let, I wanted to remind everyone about the Ecology Center. They have something coming up on June 13th, Managing Water When Water Is Scarc, and it's an event at the Sonoma Garden Park, which is June 13th, 10 to 12:30 a.m. And if I can make it, I'd like to go to that as well. I attended the Health Action Committee, and, number one, they're congratulating us on our TLR. They think it's a brave move, and of course, they're hoping the county will follow suit with that. The other thing, I think I mentioned earlier, that some of the cities couldn't attend, but they chimed in on the phone, on the line, phone lines, that with respect to transportation, for smaller cities, it's really very difficult. And, that they're, you know, it's just harder for smaller cities to get that funding. I still am not privy to a lot of that information, but I will seek help from, from vice mayor Lori Gallion, and I thought it would be nice if you heard that as well. Thank you.
Council member Edwards?
So, I attended the Memorial Day event this year. I want to shout out to Bob Leonard from the Rotary Club, who put it together. He's a former Marine, and how moving it was, Congressman Thompson was here. I thought it was terrific, but another shout out to the Rotary Club for sponsoring all the food, the Red Grape Restaurant, and so on. The quality of the event has moved immensely over the years. I appreciate the community that showed up and helped, and also to all those veterans out there.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
My activities have been very restricted due to the passing of my mother, but I have gone to the Memorial Day celebration. And, I'd just like to say that, you know, this is all about Mr. Parks and his contribution as well. And, it's, it's always incredible to see the vision of someone who lives in community, really entertains community, and works together with a group to produce such a beautiful memorial cemetery as that. And, I just would like to thank all the members that made that happen, but also the vision of this particular group that maintains this particular cemetery. It is absolutely beautiful. I did attend on, as Carl Lenoys had said, the Climate Adaptation Workshop. This was not a meeting for electeds, this was not a meeting for prominent people. This was actually, you know, a good mix of very bright, astute, innovative individuals within this county. I think we were 70 in, in total. And, we met out at the Laguna in Sebastopol, which was a beautiful setting to actually remind us what we were doing for climate. And, it was very thought-provoking, very innovative in its delivery. It was talking about, you know, what the North Bay Adaptive Climate Institute has, has brought forward, and they do have a grant to continue further. And I looked back on some of the stars that were there, and there's Lisa Machelli, who's, you know, part of our, was part of our Community Services and Environment Commission, and a lot of our environmental representatives. And I was very, very pleased to be there, and I think there will be a lot of good work coming out of there, not just in the normal way that electeds might think, or the normal way that staff members might think, but actually people, it's representing people. And, I had shared my views with the city manager, and a lot is actually being talked around the disaster emergency preparedness aspect. And, believe me, there was a lot of conversation about the wildfires, and what will be happening to communities as a result of the changes that are here, as well as the flooding aspect, as well as the earthquakes, and things of that nature. And, for those in our communities who don't have the ways or the means in which to provide, you know, what is being done for them and their education process. Lastly, let me just make sure I have everything here. I just wanted to say that this Friday night, we'll be having our, another graduation from our high school. I'm planning on attending. I just want to say that it's been one of the things that, since I was mayor in 2011, I've always welcomed having, you know, the city council there, as well as the Board of Trustees. This is the future of our community. And we've managed to have them here for whatever years they've been in Sonoma. And it's a nice way to say, you know, congratulations, and go on, and be blessed with whatever your futures are. So, I will be attending that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And, do you have anything? I would like to report that I've been busy in the last couple weeks. I attended the Luther Burbank Rose Parade, which they said that, I think it was the first time the mayor had been in the parade. It was really enjoyable. I think when, whenever they up here has their turn as mayor, they should definitely do that. Very well receptive of the crowd. They all said they were going to come to Sonoma. And, I would also like to thank the Rotarians and council member Edwards for the Memorial Day. They did a great job. I heard from a lot of people that it's- I heard from a lot of people that it's probably one of the best Memorial Day celebrations in the country. And I can say that it's very impressive to see how the Rotarians can feed that many people in such a short period of time. I also was in the parade for the Sonoma Raceway Historical Car, which was last Friday night, and, or Saturday night. And I also attended Buena Vista, gave the proclamation that I gave two weeks ago. And they, John Charles Bouset did present the city, which I'll be bringing it, part of, part of the, the rock from, from the champagne sellers, which I thought was a great gift to the city, so. And then tonight, my colleagues, along with myself and city manager, Carol Givinato, we attended Sonoma Stompers, and I threw out the first pitch. So want to congratulate the Sonoma Stompers for the beginning of their season. And also, the graduation is this Friday, and I'm going to be at that event. And I think, like Vice Mayor Gallion said, it's very important to see our youth going through that milestone and moving on. And then on June 14th, we have Flag Day here in the Plaza, which I'm sure all my colleagues will be there also. With that, I will go to city manager comments and announcements, including amount, announcements for the successor agency. With that, I will have comments from the public. Seeing none, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 9:40.